My name is Jason Perro. Good evening. I'm the chairman of the Northborough Board of Selectmen and I call to order this Monday, January twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one, meeting of the board. Before we begin, we have some preliminary information we have to get to because of our remote meeting situation. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which is posted at the top of our agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. Please note that this meeting is being conducted with the Zoom application and is being recorded. Attendees, you will be visible. You may be advised to mute your microphone when you're not speaking to avoid any intrusion of unintended sound. In order to proceed with the agenda, let me explain the ground rules. We'll proceed, or as the chair, I'll proceed through the agenda. And invite each presenter or speaker to make their presentation. After the presentations concluded, I will poll the members of the board for their questions, comments, or motions. Board members, please hold until your name is called. As stated previously, please remember to mute your microphone when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please conduct all your communications through me, the chair. In the event that we lose connectivity with a member, we may suspend the meeting temporarily to try to reestablish communication and proceed as best we can. When we reach the public comment items on the agenda, I will explain the the process for participation by members of the public. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call. And I believe that concludes the preliminaries. I would just like to go through and introduce and do a check with each of the members who are participating in the meeting. My name is Jason Perro, chairman of the Board of Selectmen. We also have, when I call your name, please just acknowledge by voice, please unmute yourself and acknowledge by voice. Tim Kalin, vice chair.
Present.
Leslie Rattan, clerk.
Present.
Julian Hirsch, member.
Present.
Scott Rogers, member.
Also present.
In addition, we have members of town staff, John Codere, town administrator.
Present.
Becca Meekins, assistant town administrator.
Present.
Scott Charpentier, director of Public Works.
Present.
William Lieber, police chief.
Present.
And David Parenti, fire chief and our host for this Zoom meeting.
I'm present.
We also have technical services provided by Northborough Cable Access Television, so we thank them for their assistance tonight. With that, I think we're prepared to begin the agenda. First item would be the approval of the January eleven, two thousand and twenty one, meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? Leslie.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the January eleven, two thousand and twenty one, meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Moved by Leslie Rattan, first second by Julian Hirsch. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
Tim Kalin.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perro, also vote aye. The approval of minutes carries unanimously. It's past the hour of seven o'clock and we have Kristen Black, our health agent, providing a COVID nineteen update. I'm sorry, on the wrong list over here. There she is. And hello, Kristen.
Hi there. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, for inviting me here tonight. I'm hoping our Zoom host will give me share privileges. Be demanding.
Oh, sure.
Let's see, I think.
I think I just promoted you to panelist. I think that should take care of it.
Okay, so let me try this again. And okay, so. Let's see.
Will it turn your video on, Kristen?
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize it was off. Just bear with me a minute. Too many, too many screens. Okay. Let's see. All right, I think we're live. Thanks for your patience, everybody. Excited to be here. I feel like for the first time I have some good news to share. So we'll get on mostly talking tonight about our update on the vaccine plan. Just want to show you again, one brief slide, just showing our case counts as an update. So we, you know, case wise, we're sort of holding steady, starting to drop off from that surge we all saw after, you know, the Christmas break. Again, our total case count, this was updated last Friday on the twenty second, our case count as of the time on Friday was nine hundred and thirty four total cases. Active cases being how many people have an active infection in the community and that's only confirmed by PCR. We had a hundred and two. Case count over the last fourteen days, anything with an asterisk was as it was reported in the weekly public health report from Mass DPH was showing over the last fourteen days is a hundred and thirty six cases. So again, that's over two weeks. Percent positivity did dip below the five percent. So we're at four point five percent. And for that reason, we went back to yellow or moderate risk category. But again, we have those high case counts. So I think it's important just to see that over time. Where we can see that, you know, we are, you know, been bouncing around a little bit on that two week count. So we came down off our peak of Thanksgiving, but you know, we're still high, you know, so everyone should have their guard up and be following all those best practices and really, you know, the more and more we hear is people are just letting guard their guard down a close among close family and friends. You know, it's gatherings on the weekends or it's visiting a family member or, you know, it's, you know, getting a little closer than they were to people at their activities, maybe extracurricular. So keep your guard up. Cases are still high. So let's just get into the quick meat of our vaccine plan. Lot of updates. I've been making changes on the fly today because the information's coming out that quickly. So rapidly evolving situation, the big question for most people is when can I be vaccinated? I think I was here the most recently presenting to you, we talked a lot about that phase one category in the far left. And I'm happy to announce that anyone who is in phase one is currently eligible to receive the vaccine. And so I'll talk a little bit more in future slides about, you know, where they can do that and how we're distributing that information. But what I really want to focus, the biggest update that really sort of took us all by surprise today were some changes in phase two. In order of priority, so individuals seventy five plus, we knew that was there, but they sort of broke this category down a little bit more. So we're going to start with seventy five and over. So each bullet is a category. So we're going to open a one bullet at a time. This is all set by the state. And as announced today at the governor's press conference, anyone seventy five and over is eligible as of February first. So I believe that's Monday of next week. So that was a big jump, right? We just opened up to everybody in phase one, just last week or so. And now here we are jumping right into phase two. So there's the estimated timeline, just to draw your attention at the bottom, that really hasn't changed at all. But it's a little bit of shifting around these bullets. So, you know, the vaccine plan's a living, working document. There's a way to comment to the state. You know, for phases, people have been advocating to move things around and it's it's a living, breathing document and you're going to see those slight changes. So we recommend people constantly check back. So again, these updates from the press conference I just want to go over is that the Baker Pluto administration did announce the expansion of these COVID vaccine sites, including some new mass vaccination sites, opening of pharmacies. I'll talk about that on another slide. And so what we're going to see here again, like phase two eligibility, most noteworthy, if you're seventy five and older, you're now at that first priority group all by yourselves. We're going to focus on you in the coming weeks and then we'll move on to sixty five years and older have now moved down. They were previously at the bottom of phase two. So you'd know that if you were in the sixty five and over category, you're at the very end of phase two, you've been bumped up to the second bullet. And that's in conjunction with anybody having those two or more comorbidities. And that's as defined on the CDC's website. So again, February first, we're starting with seventy five and older. And this link here, the mass.gov forward slash COVID vaccine map is where you can go to find those locations. So again, these new mass vaccination sites, I just want to point out, the three that were announced today, one in Springfield, one in Danvers, ones, one in Boston. And these are in addition to the mass vaccination sites that we're already hearing about at Gillette and Fenway. So they're trying to sprinkle around the state, but you notice we're sort of missing here in the middle of the state, you know? So we're hoping that, you know, they're in the coming weeks, they expect to announce at least seven more mass vaccination sites. So these sites are all open to anybody across the Commonwealth. They're sponsored by the Mass Department of Public Health. And they're all, every site that I'm going to talk about today is going to require that pre-registration. So again, just to quickly go over our phase one group where it's open for everyone. We obviously, this is sort of the categories moving through. We had six categories. Anybody that meets any of these categories, it's currently open in our health department office. We have been working nonstop in the last week since this opened up to really help get the word out and help people find sites. It's not super easy to navigate. We're a resource to help residents. A great success story was that Whittier Rehab example, for example, in Westboro, they had additional vaccine leftover from their employee clinic. They reached out to Mary Ellen Duggan, she forwarded the information to me, and we were able to help connect, I think about fifteen phase one category people to Whittier Rehab and they vaccinated them on Friday. So there are sort of these down under, you know, they're not advertised mass sites, but groups that are doing the right thing. So whoever has the vaccine, again, it's all distributed by the state. They have to follow the same rules as everybody across the state. So for that reason, that's why they reached out because they needed to find these phase one individuals. So the big question from residents is where will we be vaccinated? Okay. And, you know, it's, think of it as very much like a flu shot, you know, and this is the way the state's moving forward. So you're hearing about these pharmacies coming online. There's partnerships with Hannaford's, our Wegmans in town is one of those sites. We're going to, you know, Big Y, CVS, you know, not every location in the state's going to be a vaccination site, but they're starting to select those. Hospitals are obviously, you know, have some capacity. Marlboro Hospital's been a good partner. They're starting to ramp up capacity and we have an open dialogue with the health department and we'll work with the senior center, for example, to get our residents registered at that hospital site. Medical offices should be coming online soon. They're sort of not quite yet for patients, but now that we're open to that seventy five and over, anticipate that you may be able to call your doctor and get the vaccine at your doctor's office. And what we'll talk about a little bit more is locally sponsored clinics, such as our Town of Northborough Clinic, we're working very diligently on. And then lastly, again, would be these mass vaccination sites and hopefully we'll learn about one that's coming up in our area. When the state says a mass vaccination site, they're looking at five hundred plus doses per day. Some of the sites are running seven days a week. Every site is different. And the state hopes those mass vaccination sites, according to the press conference today, will ramp up to five thousand vaccines, up to five thousand vaccines at a single site in a day. So again, just to go over these, this map that's available on the state's website, which really categorized into these types of different locations. And so it's important to note the red star, which when I clipped this screenshot yesterday, only include, it's Gillette and Fenway are those red stars. We'll see more coming online. Again, that's high volume. All these sites require appointments. Moving to green stars, those are sort of our general vaccination sites, our closest. I'll show you on the next screen, hospitals, for example. Purples are these general vaccination sites like pharmacies. And the yellow star are more locally sponsored vaccination sites. So one of these stars on the map, for example, is Natick is running a clinic only for Natick phase one people and you're seeing them as a yellow star on this map. But the map is interactive. It's not as intuitive, I think, as we all hope it would be. You know, when you click on the star, there's going to be an explanation about the site where it's located, the link to register and who's currently eligible and additional registration details. So here's just a zoom in of our area. So what do we have in our area? What's going to be coming online? Again, Marlboro Hospital is a great partner. They're starting to really ramp up. I'm actually back and forth with their staff and trying to help them coordinate with MRC volunteers, et cetera, and make sure they have that capacity. And that we are going to help them fill those missing slots if they have any availability. And we'll talk a little bit about our notification list and how we'll do that. So again, as we move west, we have two sites in Worcester. One is our UMass Memorial, the medical campus. We also have the central mass allergy and asthma care location. They don't have much capacity there from what I've heard. And then like the Holden up in the purple star, Holden Walgreens, Gardner Walgreens also came on board. Those are our closest. And then these yellow stars again are these local clinics and they may be really specific as to what communities they're serving. So, you know, the signup form that I think many of you heard about, thanks to the town clerk and everybody for helping to spread that on social media, et cetera. We put that online, the health department, back on Tuesday, January twelfth. So was that thirteen days ago, if I have my math right? So that form went live. It was a simple form I built through Google. You know, we created a tiny URL. It really had yes or no questions, so we could narrow down what phase people fell into and then provide appropriate notifications. We had over three thousand signups in two weeks. And so this was specific to Northborough residents and any employees in town. So overwhelming response. Other communities have borrowed this template. People want to be notified. They want to be on a list. And because of that list, we were able to identify a hundred and fifty individuals who classified into that group one or phase one. So a lot of medical providers, you know, or occupational therapists, physical therapists, home health aid workers. And we were able to pair them and send them information on the availability of local clinics. So that was a really good success story. And we're excited about that, but the list is becoming a little unmanageable at three thousand, you know, and cutting and pasting into Outlook and how do you unsubscribe if I got the vaccine? So as of today, thanks to the help of our town accountant, we were able to successfully create a constant contact account. I don't know if you're familiar with them, you know, but it's a, it's an online software that helps to manage large email for marketing reasons. So we're marketing the COVID vaccine, you know, so we have that account. It's going to allow, I'm changing the signup, we'll still have the same landing page and so people won't, you know, and I'm going to migrate all that data over. But it's just going to make it a little easier for us to notify people and for also, once they're vaccinated, to unsubscribe. So we're working on that right now. And so, you know, I was on a regional call with Metro West Groups and we were talking with Hopkinton and Framingham and all these other towns in our area. And I thought the Framingham Health Director over there, Alex had a great point. She said, you know, what we're doing right now is matchmaking, right? Like it's, it's like a dating service between residents in the vaccine. And it's a wild world. So there's some really obvious, there's Gillette, great, go register there. But, you know, just like we've found throughout this whole pandemic with COVID testing is, you know, there's test centers out there, but you can log on all day long and you can't find an appointment and it's so frustrating. And then I finally realized the key was, you know, you get the inside scoop, you realize you got to get online between five and seven, that's when you find the appointment. So we're going to try to be the same conduit for our residents who are going to struggle to find these appointments because the key thing is, you know, these sites are opening, the sites are not the problem, the vaccinators are not the problem, the supply is the problem at this point. So that's really where we want to be, that matchmaking service. The other thing with, currently the state is requiring everybody to pre-schedule, right? None of these are walk-in clinics. I haven't even heard of that. I don't think we're going to see that in any time in the future. And now we've opened to seventy five and over. So, you know, not everybody can register. Tech savvy people have struggled. So we're going to work with our youth and family services. I've been on the phone several times today with Liz, our senior center director, to say, how can we, how can our town staff? How can we really make it easier for people and support them through this registration process? Incoming soon, we will be putting out, now that we have much more information on local clinics, I'm going to talk about our own clinic, we'll make a specific webpage just to talk about local clinics for our residents. So the exciting news is we are well on our way to opening our own vaccination site in town. This is turning into a monumental task and I have great partners in this process. So my new BFF, Chief Parenti, is fabulous. And this wouldn't be moving forward without his great support and the willingness of the fire department staff to really help us with all of this. So we're in the process, we received our key state approvals. There's approval of all these acronyms and I don't need to bore you with them, but we have all of our approvals. And just before I got on this call, I did submit our first request for the vaccine. We'd be administering Moderna. It's much easier to store. Pfizer's pretty limited for any local boards of health because Pfizer, you know, comes in around a thousand doses and requires ultracool handling and also to reconstitute the vaccine. It's not as easy to use. So you're going to see that more at the hospitals. Local clinics are going to most likely be administering Moderna. You know, as I worked through the weekend with chief and getting everything ready and we said, we're going to do this, we can do six hundred per week. We're going to do two days and we've got stabbing already though. Or DPH said the overwhelming requests and the limitations in the vaccine in Massachusetts sites are only able to request a hundred vaccines per week. So that is shocking, disappointing, upsetting. You know, at that rate, we would vaccinate a third of our population in two years. So it's not really what we were hoping for. But I don't think this is all for naught. You know, this, we're setting up the process, we're setting up the infrastructure. More vaccine will become available. We're hopeful of the Johnson and Johnson. I think we all have our fingers crossed, the one dose, they're already manufacturing it and that's going through approvals in the next month. So there's some things that could just be game changers on allotments and, you know, access to that vaccine. So we're staying tuned. We have, you know, thanks to Lorraine at the fire department, Chief Parenti, we've worked through and are approved for billing. While we have the CARES Act money, when we're talking about vaccinating ten thousand residents and paying EMTs to assist with vaccination, we'd run out of CARES Act at some point. So we will have the ability to bill through the insurance. And again, we're being told, you know, with the vaccine, the vaccine itself is supplied by the state. So there's no cost for the vaccine, the state holds sort of the purse strings on that and also, you know, the distribution of the vaccine. But what we're allowed to bill for is up to ninety dollars for the two doses together for administrative fees and that would cover, you know, cost to pay vaccinators. So we think while we stand this up, it should be a sustainable program that we can keep open and going. And again, you know, we are part of the solution to vaccination. We're not all of it, right? You know, you're going to have your doctor's offices, the pharmacies, the mass vaccination sites. So that's sort of where we stand in our planning. So again, the timing for the start of this clinic is going to be sometime in February. It may be as early as the first week or depending on allotment, we might be running towards the end. So the request is there. We've worked really hard in doing everything we can on our end to be able to stand up this clinic. And again, it would be a private clinic that would only be open to Northborough residents. You know, we're using our resources, our town staff to do this. So we would be starting that way to really just support our residents through this process. And so again, with staffing, just to go over, we'd be using our EMTs and medics from the fire department, or we're not going to pull them off ambulances. These are staff that would be additional to the regular shifts. We'll also be pulling on our school nurses, you know, based off their ability, you know, as we have more vaccine available. Health department staff, we'd be looking at medical reserve corps volunteers. We pull from both the, we have our group out of Greater Grafton and also the Worcester MRC. And I'm working with Becca in, you know, trying to outline and possibly post to hire of a new, you know, temporary position for a vaccine coordinator. Because this is, you know, turning out to be a lot of work and it's something especially if we're going to be running it several days a week, we need that additional staff person. But that would be something covered through CARES, you know, and or the reimbursement of the vaccines. And so, and I just, you know, so that was really it on the vaccine. I just want to just put this slide up real quickly. There was an update on the business front, just want to make you aware of. I think most businesses know this is on our COVID business page. So the, you know, twenty five percent capacity limits that went into place, I think it was December twenty sixth. Those have been extended through February eighth, you know. I wouldn't be surprised if they're lifted out there. We're seeing these numbers, our case counts come down. And then the curfew was recently rescinded, I guess, as of today. And so businesses that were having that required closure, or if your gym was closed at nine thirty or something like that, that curfew has been lifted. So that's really all I have on our presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Kristen. Appreciate all the information and certainly I'm sure people are curious about what the rollout of the vaccine, vaccination plan will be. So board members, any questions? Leslie?
Yeah, thank you very much, Kristen. And I know that there must be so much work to get a site set up in town. And I'm sure it'll be fantastic to have that. And I'm sure not every community will. That would be three hundred and fifty one, you know, sites trying to open up. So good luck with that and thank you very much for your work on that. That's wonderful. Question, what if someone qualifies to get the vaccine, let's say in phase two, but for whatever reason, might be questioning whether or not they want to get it, delays getting it? Is that vaccine then going to be available for that person down the road in phase three?
Yeah, so most definitely you can vaccine, you know, sort of anyone above, right? Or that's already been available on the list. You just can't jump ahead. So if you're a phase two, three, we're not going to start vaccinating anybody in like phase three, right? So if you delay, you know, we can't guarantee the access is good. So like with our first responders, we said, hey, we're making it easy. Just walk in the door, you know, it's convenient. If someone delays, it's not to say that it wouldn't be open, but you know, we'll be reprioritizing as a town. But if they can get an appointment, you can always be already approved, right? So if, as long as you're on the list or higher tiered than the current, you just can't be lower tiered. So that should not be a problem.
Okay. And another question, what, what would you say are the things that people should be very careful about after they've been vaccinated? How should they be handling themselves in terms of safety?
No, it's a good point. It's really important to remember that this is part of the solution. But all of these actions we've been taking of mask wearing, social distancing, that's going to continue. So, you know, really the two factors is the vaccine's not perfect. It's not a hundred percent. You're not a superhero after. And that also, you know, there, there's a lot of chatter out there right now about silent spreaders. You know, I don't know if you've heard about that. People are concerned that even if you have the vaccine, while you, the purpose of the vaccine is to prevent you from serious illness. But there's some concern whether or not somewhere along the line, you could actually have a mild case, not know it and give it to somebody else. So you can't make this assumption that I have the vaccine, you know, I can let my guard down, I can, you know, you know, forget social distancing. We don't really have a lot of information on that silent spreader, how prevalent that would be, you know, how likely it would be if you had the vaccine, you could have a mild case and give it to something else. It's just this hasn't been around long enough. So we just don't have those answers, you know, sort of on that like difficult question of silent spreader, we're also dealing with the difficult question of these new variants and, you know, what is this currently designed Moderna vaccine or Pfizer vaccine? How effective will it be? So there's some preliminary work with Moderna. I think they just announced some tonight, some new studies where they're doing blood work and looking at the vaccine and these new and looking at the vaccine and these new strains. And it does appear that it is going to be effective over time. Will it be less effective as new strains emerge? Possibly, but it's sort of like the flu, right? You, they design the flu every year, the flu vaccine. And you know, those strains change and they try to predict them and then they design a vaccine to, you know, best be effective against those current strains we're seeing. So that's sort of similar. But yeah, it's not, it's not magical when you get the vaccine that, you know, your life is, I think the disappointing, it's not going to totally change. But you're going to be less likely for serious illness and that's what we're trying to prevent. And it's pretty good evidence to say you're going to be less likely to spread it to others. It's just the scientific community isn't going to make that statement until they can prove it. And the vaccine hasn't been long enough, you know, out long enough to really make any concrete decisions. But those studies are there and we're going to see, you know, answers to those questions really soon.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all your work.
Welcome.
Any other questions by the board? Julian?
Kristin, that was such a great presentation and so clear. And I think you answered a lot of the questions that are out there right now very, very well. So my question is still about, I brought the topic up last time about town meeting, which we have late in April. I imagine that you'll be monitoring the percentage of people who are vaccinated in town. And what, what, it looks like you want to say something?
Yeah, well, I don't, I mean, we'll know our numbers at our clinics. I don't know yet, you know, if we're going to get that information fed in from every site. So again, you know, if people can go to five different types of sites, you know, I won't, I won't necessarily have that data. But that's not to say the state may start to report it. I just don't have that information as far as I know.
Because is it reasonable to say that that would be a barometer to watch as we start having big meetings? And you know, what percentage of the town is?
Yeah, I, I think we're going to get that guidance probably at the state level. I mean, all communities are going to be going through the same town meeting process. I mean, we're hearing already about, you know, what large arena is opening for sporting events, right? So by the time we're at town meeting, I think we're going to lot, know a lot more about transmission and how the rates of transmission are, are hopefully being lowered by, you know, as the number of people vaccinated increases. So I think that information's going to be there. I don't know if we'll have that at the local level at our fingertips. But I do anticipate that that's something the state will be monitoring and also making recommendations. I mean, I think John and Becca can speak to the amount of guidance that did come from the state around, you know, open meetings and that discussion and best practices. And, and really are they still saying, you know, an outdoor meeting or not? Is it advisable how many people? I think we'll have more information, but I don't know if we'd have that like town of Northborough specific information in advance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Julian. Any other questions? Seeing none. Kristin, thank you very much. As always, a very comprehensive and informative presentation. And I must say, I don't think I've ever heard the phrase marketing COVID previously, so. We'll keep that one in mind. Again, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Kristin.
And next up on the agenda, Chief, could you assist me in pulling in the correct attendees for this next segment?
I will. Hang on a second. Okay, I just brought in Northborough Fire. You guys, you should make sure that you turn on your, your video, Captain. Lower left. We just set it up on our new screen today on our big screen. So it's, it's probably kind of a little awkward for him.
There we go.
There you guys, I see you. You can come closer so I can see all you. I can only see one of you.
Yeah, you guys can step in closer.
There they come. Look at them all. What a good looking group of guys.
Excellent. So this next agenda item, past the hour of seven oh five, we have David Parenti, Fire Chief, for the swearing in ceremony of Morgan Doyle as firefighter paramedic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's been, it's been a busy several months with replacing personnel. We had some people leave unexpectedly, some leave expectedly. And as you know, Mr. Chair, you participated, we actually had a, we got very fortunate in that we had a great slate of people. In fact, I don't think I've ever been through one before where we had four qualified candidates we could hire off of. And Morgan was our last one on the list and luckily he was still available to us only by a couple of seconds. Because when I called him, he was actually on the list to interview for another department that I'm not going to speak about, who I think is mad at us. But he took our position, so we're very happy with that. Morgan comes to us from Brewster Ambulance Service. And again, Brewster's not happy with us because I've taken like six people from them. He already has quite a few years of experience. He, he grew up in Minnesota and did a lot of outdoor stuff out there and he went to Michigan Technic, Technology, Technological University and was working on mechanical engineering. And then, you know, as we often do realize, you know, what we really want to do is be a firefighter, no matter what we thought we wanted to do, this is what we're going to do. So he went to, he, he came to the east coast and went to Bunker Hill Community College in twenty fifteen, where he got his degree in paramedicine and graduated in twenty sixteen. So unlike some of the people we've hired recently, Morgan comes to us with at least four to five years' experience as a paramedic, which is nice to have that behind him. What he doesn't have is any fire experience, but we'll take care of that shortly. And as I was interviewing, I think the day I called Morgan to offer him the position is the day he was closing on his new house in Northborough on Davis. So he said, well, I think I could drive to Northborough to work or drive to this other place. Let me think where I'll go. So him and his fiancee Amy bought a house right in Northborough. We're excited to have him on there. The, I did send you guys a memo that had him starting a little bit earlier at the Fire Academy, but the academy's changed their whole curriculum from mostly remote to mostly in person. And with that, there's been quite a few changes. So Morgan's actually starting on May tenth, which weather wise is probably nicer for him than starting in February. I have a couple of guys going in February. And then he'll be graduating July twenty-third, which won't be very fun because it'll be hot by the end of the, of that. We're very excited to have him coming on board and I introduce to you Morgan Doyle.
Great, thank you very much, Chief. Hello, Morgan. What I'll first do is invite you to, to say a few words or give a little bit of description about your interests.
Guys are going to have to push the unmute button in the bottom left-hand corner over there of the screen. There you go.
Yeah, go ahead, Morgan.
Speak up, Morgan. Great, so our new camera, the mic's not working.
It seems we're not getting any audio on our end here.
Not your fault. Look, he's looking. What do I do? What do I do? Not your fault. I just, I tested it the other day and it was working fine. So of course today's not working. That's okay. I'd recommend we probably just go through with the swearing in, even though we can't hear and we can see him.
Okay, just, I'll ask members of the board, any comments, questions? Leslie?
Well, I'm, thank you, Morgan, for applying to Northborough and deciding on Northborough and also for living in Northborough. I think that's wonderful. You have a super background, really interesting. I know Minnesota's beautiful. Obviously you did a lot of great outdoor stuff there. So you have a wide variety of interests. And again, you have a great professional background too. So we're so pleased that you're here in Northborough and deciding to work with us here. And I don't know who else is there. Typically I ask them to introduce themselves and I can't do.
Why do you think they all went and hid Leslie? So you can't tell them. That's why they all scattered, so you can't see them. I can tell you sea shifts on duty. Captain Desatell, he's there and his crew.
Okay, and who else would that be, Chief?
So we have Captain Desatell, Step Out Captain, yeah, firefighter, Deuce Mo is there somewhere, right? And firefighter, paramedic Peters is there somewhere.
Awesome.
And firefighter Sneeze there somewhere. Look at, I got them all.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for being here. Great opportunity. Thank you very much, Morgan. Thank you to your department.
Thanks, Leslie. Any other members of the board? I'll just add my comments. Morgan, just welcome to Northborough. We certainly appreciate your choosing here. Certainly if you're already of a mind to relocate here, that says a lot about your, your interest in the town and where you want to be. So to have a resident who's working on the department is just a, just a great thing. We certainly appreciate that. And certainly your experience is very valuable in terms of paramedic to this point. So that's a strong credential to have and something that allows you to go to work immediately essentially. So just looking forward to having you on the force and it's a great group of guys, one of the best departments, the best department in Massachusetts as far as I'm concerned.
Oh, don't tell your son that, Jason, come on.
He's at the second best department.
Okay, I'll buy that.
And I'll try to get him to join. So anyway, welcome, Morgan. We appreciate your being here and good luck and best, best, best of luck at the academy when, when you go. So at this point, I think, what would we like to do here, Chief?
I, I think what we can do is Andy can read, it is an abbreviated swearing in abbreviated script. Andy can, can read it and when, when, when Morgan is done, he can nod his head and then we'll give Andy the cue to go ahead to the next line.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Sure, that's, that's fine with me.
And I'll check tomorrow to make sure he actually said the words.
I was going to say, we'll have, we have the, the other members of the department there, submit affidavits to, to confirm that the oath was taken. Town Clerk Andy Dowd, would you like to proceed with the swearing in?
There he is. Hoping you can hear my voice because I lost the audio when, okay, I see the chair nodding. Thank you. For some reason, when I was promoted, my audio cut out. So in any event, Morgan, if you would raise your right hand, I'll make you official. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as firefighter, paramedic for the town of Northborough, accordance with the bylaws of the town and the laws of the Commonwealth. So help you God. We'll take a nod. Congratulations.
Very good. Thank you very much, Andy. Thank you, Morgan. Welcome again and we look forward to seeing you around town. All right.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
I apologize, Mr. Chair. I did test it before, but you know, it's like the Rolex and the John Cameron Swayze, it worked in rehearsal. Not to age myself or anything, but.
Right, right. Okay, very good. Next item, business is the public hearing to discuss options to address traffic and safety concerns. This is a public hearing. The way we'll conduct this is we first have a presentation by town administrator John Codere. And then we'll follow that with any questions, comments from the board on that presentation. Then we'll open it for a public hearing. Well, it will be a public hearing. We'll open it for a comment from members of the public. We have quite a number of people queued up here as attendees, so I imagine we'll be hearing from them shortly. And when we get to that point, as I said, I'll explain the procedure for public comment through the remote session here. So with that, John, would you care to begin?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So obviously, as the board knows, we've had a, quite a bit of interest in traffic issues as of late, particularly the last couple of months. Now, the vast majority of that is pertaining to Bartlett Street and in some way or fashion related to Amazon coming down on that street. And it's renewed some interest in truck traffic on that roadway. And the town's been asked by residents, you know, what can we do to mitigate some of that? So you know, we've been very active in terms of engaging the haulers down there, FedEx, Aduwe Pile, Amazon, as well as the owner of three oh one Bartlett Street, which has a number of smaller businesses that are located in that one structure. And so we continue to do that. We gave a comprehensive memo to the board at your last meeting or prior meeting with all of the actions and where things stand. And we've distributed that information out to the residents as well. Hasn't been the most efficient, and I'll admit this, the most efficient communication vehicle. And that's one of the things we want to talk to you about this evening. So before I do that, I do want to give just a couple of updates on a couple of items that we have discussed in terms of some of the progress we've made. You know, one of which is the crosswalk at the corner of Maple and Route twenty. As you know, we have requested from the state to allow us to put a flashing beacon, a pedestrian activated beacon at that location to make crossing more, more safe. And initially they had rejected that. We asked for reconsideration. We worked very closely with our legislative delegation. They sent a letter on the town's behalf and I'm thankful Senator Chandler, Senator Eldridge, Representative Greg War and our new representative Meg Kilcoyne all signed on, sent a very nice letter on our behalf. Mass Highway has indicated that they are reviewing and giving that some additional consideration. So we hope to hear back on that one soon. We also did install our first flashing beacon down on South Street on that crosswalk. And so that's been implemented and, and well received by that particular neighborhood. One thing, a reason why I did want to mention this is these pedestrian activated flashing beacons are things that you're seeing a number of communities start to use. Scott Sharptier, the DPW director, actually requested funding for four or five of them in fiscal twenty-one. Unfortunately, as you know, we had to cut over six hundred thousand dollars out of the operating budget due to reduced anticipated revenues because of the pandemic. So we'd left one in there and that's where that one went, anticipating that we'll be revisiting that in fiscal twenty twenty-two's budget to look at additional locations to do that. But that was something that had already been requested by the director, unfortunately, just due to financial constraints. We weren't able to proceed with many more of those in the current fiscal year, but we will come back to that. And then there's been, as is typical, a number of requests for speeding enforcement. Police chief has multiple radar, radars that we are, those are the radar machines on the side of the road, you know, that warned you of what your speed is. So those are constantly being distributed around town and as well as the chief taking requests for additional enforcement in certain areas. Now speeding is not indicative of just, you know, Northborough. If you travel anywhere, it's a, it's just a perennial issue everywhere, all the time. And in some regards, you know, you do enforcement in one areas and invariably you'll have other enforcement issues popping up elsewhere. But those are things that are ongoing. So now in terms of addressing some of the concerns, we've had residents call up. One of the things that we want to be responsive to is, is getting back to folks so that they know what the status of things is. Now, I realized in the last, last week or so, as I've been hitting, you know, reply all to a number of emails and trying to get information out about things that we have been able to get accomplished, in particular with communications with the haulers out on Bartlett Street. It's a little bit of hit or miss. I think there were a lot of people, I got emails from a lot of folks that were on that group distribution that really weren't interested in being on there. I'm not quite sure how they got on, so, but they've stepped off. So we really want to focus on the people that are interested in getting the information and having a dialogue about what's being done and what can be done out there. So as we look at this, is, we, the staff had some discussions about, you know, short-term, long-term approaches to traffic and safety and, and how do we best kind of move the, move things forward? But we also want to make sure that what we recommend and whatever we do is, is also in align, aligned with other processes that are ongoing in the town. Not the least of which is the master plan implementation committee. But after a considerable discussion, beyond, again, all the stuff that we're doing, we have, are continuing to do in terms of working with the, the facilities out on Bartlett Street in terms of signage. The board voted to make Bartlett no parking, enforcement out there, building signage issues, training of drivers. All of that stuff is still continuing and ongoing, made great progress. We have had on Bartlett Street a hundred percent response back from the facilities out there that they are onboard with putting up the signage that we've requested, signage is all, has been ordered. And it's just a matter of that being, the orders being completed and will be installed as soon as it's, as soon as they receive it. So that's been great news. I know the board and the residents have seen the mock-up that was done by the staff, particularly DPW director. Very elaborate and comprehensive signage. So that is a signage that's going up. So we're not going to have different facilities putting up different. different facilities putting up different, uh, different, uh, messages and different signs. So there'll be consistency, uh, throughout, uh, down there. But in terms of being able to communicate more effectively, um, I'll just say, look, I've, I've been here eighteen years and, um, you know, we get, uh, questions or concerns about traffic. More often than not, they are, uh, directed to staff or directed to my office and they're managed. Sometimes they come to the board and when they come to the board, it's sometimes raised at a, at a board meeting or it's just sent off to staff. And then we reply back and the issue could be a request for a stop sign or speeding enforcement or a request to look at, uh, an intersection or something like that. And so that's how it's always been handled and that's worked, uh, uh, very well for us. Bartlett Street and the issues that have occurred down there, uh, and the interest down there is a little bit different, uh, than things that we've dealt with in the past. And so I think we need to have a little bit different, uh, mechanism to manage that type of, uh, communication. So, uh, in terms of the more of a, a short or medium term approach, uh, one of the things that we would like to propose to the board is that, uh, the town create a, uh, traffic and safety page on the website that allows residents to post questions and, uh, or request, uh, uh, information. And then, uh, the appropriate staff will respond and reply. But unlike a one-on-one communication, which is oftentimes what we've been doing, and if you're dealing with a neighborhood, you wind up with a lot of one-on-one communications. Not everybody knows what's going on. And, uh, so we want something that's going to be a little bit more, uh, transparent so folks can see uh, what's happening because what I, what I discovered certainly in the last round of emails out to, uh, larger groups is, you know, a lot of people just weren't aware of all the work and, uh, information that has been compiled. And all the, uh, steps that had been taken in the, in the progress that we'd made. Uh, they weren't aware that all of the facilities out there had agreed to, to, uh, put up signage and train their, their drivers to take the appropriate routes that we'd like them to take. So, uh, what, uh, in terms of a, a, a more medium term approach would be by putting this up, uh, uh, what we would do is we'd be able to post this information up. It'd be a running bulletin board, uh, of, of, uh, of questions and responses so that people can see what's been done, what's being done, the status of things. Um, and, uh, and then folks that are interested can post and come to that as a source of information. And folks that maybe aren't or aren't as interested in, in some of the more global issues, um, you know, they can just come in and get the information that they would, uh, be interested in receiving. So, um, that's, uh, what we're proposing in the more, uh, medium term to be able to be, uh, a little bit more effective in getting information out. Uh, again, we present, uh, lots of information, memos to the board, responses. Um, but we don't always hit everybody when we're trying to get that information back out about what's been done or what is, uh, being done or being worked on. Uh, as we start to look at a little bit more long-term, uh, you know, my concerns about, uh, about limited staff, uh, resources and, uh, and, uh, being very careful and thoughtful about, uh, introducing additional, uh, boards or committees. And so one of the things that we have that is a new board, uh, committee is the Master Plan Implementation Committee. So that is just, uh, being formed and getting up and going. And one of the, the, the primary things for that committee to do is to look at some of the more global issues of, of, um, uh, related to the master plan, one of which is a larger traffic, uh, uh, traffic, uh, review. So I imagine that what's going to wind up happening as we get into the implementation committee and they start to do their work of going through the master plan priorities and, uh, coming through with, uh, with the their, what their charge is going to be really, coming forward with, uh, priorities, uh, that we'll have to then we'll have to sort out, um, how we would go about achieving, uh, those goals and objectives. Um, some may just require appropriations, others may require the formation of committees. Some may require, uh, the hiring and, uh, use of additional consultants. But traffic is one of those things. And so as we start talking about, you know, the more global issue of traffic and the approach to that, uh, the appropriate place respectfully, uh, the recommendation of the staff is that that should be directed through the implementation committee. Now what comes out the other side remains to be seen. Now, if they recommend that there's a, a walkability committee or a complete streets committee or a traffic and safety committee, I'm not sure what will come out the other side of that. Uh, but, but, um, I think that that process, which is already underway and, and moving forward should be the process. If we're going to talk about more global issues, clearly if somebody would like a review of a stop sign or a truck exclusion, uh, those types of things, that's going to be a staff process as it has always been. Um, but if we're going to have conversations in a, in a larger scale, which I think is kind of where we're going with a lot of this, you know, about, uh, you know, walkability of the town and prioritizing sidewalks and things of that nature. You know, that's a larger process. Um, and we're going to be looking, I know I'll be looking for direction from the implementation committee as to how we start to narrow down, uh, where we want to focus on those things. Now, I know there's been a, a, a question or a call about a traffic, uh, traffic committee or of some, some, some sort being formed. Um, uh, I would not at this point, uh, be in favor or recommend that we go down that path without guidance from the implementation committee about what our priorities are, are going to be. And I'll use as a point of, um, just, uh, an example, uh, we've had some folks here say, you know, we should have a traffic committee, you know? Um, I think Lexington and Westboro were used as examples. Well, you know, Lexington first of all has twice as much staff as we have. They have a committee and a staff person for everything. Uh, they also have the tax bill that, that shows that. You know, Westboro, they have a traffic and safety committee, but they also just went through an entire staffing review. And one of the issues that they determined is they have too many committees and too many committees with duplication. Uh, and one of the committees actually that they're contemplating or was recommended they eliminate was the traffic committee. Uh, because it was being duplicated by the complete streets committee. And so the idea is, um, uh, we can form committees, but we need to make sure that it's a, it's a disciplined approach in terms of forming those committees that it follows the process of the implementation committee because again, we're going to have to have some conversations moving forward about if we're going to keep, you know, we're introducing committees and we've introduced the white list committee. You know, we've got a building committee that's going, we've got, uh, we've got a diversity inclusion committee. These are all great things. We've had people want sustainability committees and traffic committee. We can have as many committees as this community would like to support financially. Um, but, uh, it, it does come at a cost and I will say this on behalf of the staff. You know, you heard from Kristen Black tonight about what we're dealing with on the vaccination front. Every bit of spare resources and time and energy and staff that we have over the next five months is going to be dedicated towards getting that vaccines out to our residents. The linkages between finance and personnel and all that, it is massive. That is a huge undertaking and I know people, if you're not in it, you might not really appreciate fully what is going on and the impacts on the organization. But we are still operating under a pandemic that is taking every bit of spare resource that we have from HR and from, uh, from all of our departments, particularly public safety to deal with that and to manage that. That will be the case for the next four or five months. I don't want to get into a situation or I prefer that we don't start adding any additional committees until we get a little bit more guidance from the Master Plan Implementation Committee about what are the goals and objectives? Then we can talk about what are the committees that need to be formed in order to support those goals and objectives? What are the resources that need to be dedicated for those boards and committees to be successful? Now, uh, I know residents are always, uh, willing and, uh, and, and interested in helping. But when you get into some of the more technical areas, you, you need technical staff to support and to advise and to implement, uh, things that happen on boards and committees. Um, so I just want the board, uh, and you've heard me say this over and over again, particularly as, uh, and over, uh, recently. We are just overloaded and we are, and we are threadbare at this point. And again, that doesn't mean we can't do other things, but if we're going to add things, we need to make sure that we are adding them in a priority order. In the form that we all agree is what we want and that will get us to where it is we'd like to go. And then we need to also have a conversation about having the resources to effectively implement those things. So with, because of all of that respectfully, at this point in time, the recommendation is that the implementation committee uh, take on the larger issues of, you know, of approaches to traffic, walkability, those types of things. And make recommendations in terms to of what type of committee we should be forming if it requires a committee or it may require the hiring of a consultant to oversee a process. I envision coming out of this implementation committee, uh, I'd like to see some form of a downtown economic development revitalization committee. I think I'm very excited about doing something like that, but we also have to talk about getting rid of some committees. The Industrial Development Commission really doesn't serve a function anymore and we should be eliminating some of these. So those are the types of recommendations and processes that I think need to play out. Uh, and that will certainly play out over the next, you know, several months. While we are completely engulfed in dealing with the pandemic and the vaccination, that's where we're going to be spending the majority of our time and energy and resources in addition to trying to get the budget done and to test the parents, I mean, the, the students and the staff. Uh, we're all still operating, as I've said the last meeting, we're also operating with, with skeleton crews and alternating, uh, folks. So you know, we, we don't even have really the full access to the staff, the limited staff that we have now. So um, I just can't stress enough for folks, uh, that we are, we are as thin as we can possibly be and we literally, we cannot add any more boards or committees without having a discussion about why we're doing it in, in great detail, how it fits into a larger master plan. And then what are we going to bring to bear for resources, uh, in order to make sure that that committee uh, can actually be successful in doing what its intended, uh, goals and objectives are. So, um, so, uh, in that regard, uh, that would be our, uh, recommendation. So, uh, so just to summarize, you know, we continue to address any concerns or issues that are brought forward. Uh, we've met and resolved, uh, most of them. Uh, Bartlett Street is a unique beast, um, and situation. We'll continue to, uh, go, uh, continue to pursue those, uh, solutions that we've already outlined and have been, uh, begun implementing, implementing and will continue to. Um, we're providing an immediate process to better communicate and have more transparency of, uh, responses to, uh, concerns that folks may have. Um, and again, it's helpful for the staff too. So we're not having the same conversation or sending the same information to, you know, twenty people uh, over and over again, uh, everybody can see. And that's where we started kind of doing these large email distributions. But those aren't the most effective and efficient ways to do it. We believe the webpage, uh, essentially a, a traffic, a bulletin board where staff can uh, take measured approaches to responding and give good clean information. And that stays up there. So when somebody asks the same question, we can refer them back to the status of those questions and the answers. Um, if, I think if the DPW Director or I explain one more time, you know, the process and the limitations through the statute of truck exclusions, you know, it, it, it gets tiring for everybody and we want to make sure that we're giving good information and consistent information. Um, so, uh, so three, the more long-term approach again is, uh, through the, uh, Master Plan Implementation Committee, whatever comes out of that process, that's what we should be focusing or focusing our time and energy on in terms of uh, finding a way to implement and make sure that the resources are available. And then, um, last but not least, uh, one of the things that will happen is as the Master Plan Implementation Committee comes forward with their recommendations of goals and objectives, there has to be an implementation of those goals and objectives. And if we're talking about physical improvements anywhere, uh, that's going to require funding. If we're talking about large scale, uh, uh, scale studies of any kind like, uh, uh, looking at our downtown, uh, and what can be done in terms of revitalization, uh, or economic development in the downtown, those may require, uh, some additional resources in terms of consulting services. So we need to let that process play out, um, but we have placed, uh, in the, uh, capital improvement plan a placeholder in twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, because we're actually working on the capital budget for fiscal twenty twenty-two right now that will be going, be going to town meeting in the next couple of months. So, um, so the year after, when the year after that, we put placeholders in so that we will be able to have some resources to be determined uh, for what if any consultants that we need to bring in to, uh, advance the stated priority goals and objectives of the implementation committee. So, so that's kind of where we are. Um, I certainly, uh, I didn't go through all the litany of things that we're working on in the communications. Again, that's been done in a in a memo, which if anybody watching would like a copy of, I'm happy to provide that. If anybody would like a copy, this is a perfect example, the memo that we put together for you tonight, uh, outlining this approach would be very simply put up on the board. People can see it. They can comment on it. They can ask questions about it. Uh, but that would be a, an efficient and effective, uh, mechanism for doing that as we wait for the Master Plan Implementation Committee to do their job and their work about, uh, where it is that we want to go. So, um, I know it's a lot of information, uh, but again, uh, I think it's a, a very logical approach for where we are and, and how do we get to where it is that we, we think we want to go. So uh, certainly, uh, can't answer any questions that the board may have. Um, and, uh, with that, I'm going to, um, stop talking and allow the chair to proceed. Thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you very much, John. Um, what I'd like to do at this stage is, um, ask board members, uh, if they have any questions about what John has, uh, uh, offered as a staff recommendation. Uh, we can proceed with those questions, but I'd ask board members to refrain from any opinions or deliberative, uh, statements at this stage until we've heard from, uh, 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 members of the public who wish to, to, to be heard. So, uh, so with that, if there are any questions for John about, uh, the staff recommendation, Leslie.
Yeah, thank you, John, uh, for all this information. Um, question, um, as far as the town page goes, do you envision that really being the initial vehicle or the main vehicle for residents to go through as opposed to emailing town hall or, or the police department? Do you are you envisioning that things will kind of just be funneled on to that page so that then all the questions are there and all the responses are there? And would be categorized maybe by type or date or something?
Yeah, the, the, the idea is, um, a- again, if somebody has a, a, a question that they'd like to ask that they really don't want to be out there, um, they can certainly contact us. And, um, you know, it may be, uh, you know, my neighbor's kids are always speeding up, down, up and down the street, you know, can the police do some enforcement about that? They may not want that up there, but yeah, the idea is to have a place to, to post the comments and the responses and to allow people to see, you know, see those responses on an ongoing basis. Um, but, uh, we certainly will take phone calls and emails a- as well, but, uh, but you know, at what we found is as of late, they're the same comments. They're largely the same questions. And, um, and, uh, mostly pertaining to Bartlett Street. Um, but, um, but, uh, you know, that would be, uh, a much more, I, we believe, an efficient way to get the response and the information back out. Um, so I think that the, 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 the short answer is we can do all of the above, but if it's, uh, a question that's affecting a neighborhood or a larger question, uh, then, and not just you and maybe an issue you're having with a neighbor, then that would be a more appropriate way to, so to communicate that to folks.
Yes, Leslie?
Yeah, another question. Um, how, um, John, as far as long-term, uh, using the Master Plan Implementation Committee, how do you envision the information being funneled to that committee? Would it be uh, taken from the town page and trying to determine whether or not that's something that the committee should work on? Or is that going to be handled separately as far as what the committee sees?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the nuts and bolts, you know, hey, you know, we'd like a stop sign or, uh, uh, can you check the speed on our road or a truck exclusion or you know, the bushes at the corner of this intersection are really overgrown, you know, tho- those are just, it's day in and day out stuff that, that the, the staff will do or, you know, they're speeding, you know, on my road, you know, the police will, will go out and do enforcement. Uh, we'll do, um, you know, speed awareness, uh, um, with the, with the trailers as I, as I mentioned. But the, the larger, more philosophical questions regarding traffic, um, those I would envision being, uh, directed towards the implementation committee and, uh, and them taking that in as part of their work. And, uh, and making recommendations about, you know, uh, the direction that we would like to go in as a town. I mean, that's their, that's part of their job. That's why they've been formed and, um, you know, and, uh, so those types of comments are bigger pit, bigger picture questions would go to the implementation committee.
Thank you.
Any other questions by members of the board? Uh, Julian?
Uh, yes. So John, thank you for all of this and all the, um, all the ideas that you presented. I'm, I'm, I'm curious about the traffic page. Will that be some kind of like s- open forum kind of thing? Like a, like a Facebook page or how, how do you envision that?
Yeah, so we're, we're talking, Scott, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, John. Um, so when you have a, on our website now, we have a reported issue portal. You go into the report and issue, you top, you select what topic your issue is, depending on what topic it is, uh, depends on where, what staff members it goes to. Um, it comes to us in the form of an email. We, and I receive many of those, I've probably gotten a dozen of them today. Uh, my response specifically to that reporter, that, that resident, uh, with a response. And then it's a, like John indicated, it's a one-on-one dialogue. On the traffic page, it, it can be, uh, more of an open, I get the email. I can then provide a, a, a staff evaluation analysis of a response, post the email question, the issue. And then have that response below, and if there's any, um, MUTCD documentation or, um, geometric information that needs to be included, it's there. Uh, one of the things is, you know, John was indicating, we get a lot of emails about Bartlett Street. For years I've been getting emails about different crosswalks, needs for additional sidewalks, all of them viable questions. Um, and I give responses to, to residents. It would be nice if, if the neighborhood on Lantone would understand the discussions I've had a half a dozen times in the past. About an additional crosswalk, that's the idea of this, this webpage.
So I, so I guess the question is, will all? All comments and questions that come in about traffic be posted on this page, like, like a Facebook page or?
It, it won't be a dialogue, there's not going to be an interactive dialogue. Um, for example, I would like to have a, uh, the evaluation of a truck exclusion on Ridge Road, there's one on Collins. Well, there's a whole storyline behind that with traffic counts, that's the type of thing we put on the page. It's clear, it's open, concise. Um, if there's a question specifically about an addition of a, a rapid flashing beacon at a crosswalk. You know, there's a process, there's, there's budgetary constraints, I get those all over town, it's nice to have that. Open transparent, uh, communication, including documentation attached to it. As opposed to just a one-on-one with somebody from a neighborhood. But no, if you, if, Julian, if you email me and say the bushes on the corner are obstructing the view, I don't believe the residents at Northborough are too concerned about that. We'll, we'll address it. Um, that's as simple as that.
So what you're kind of envisioning is frequently asked questions, kind of?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, but as, as, as the questions come up, they'll, they would go up there, so, um.
But not all of them.
Well, I think anything that's a, that's appropriate, as I said, if somebody doesn't want their question up there, that's, you know, we don't want to, you know, someone wants to call. Cause they're concerned about their neighbor's teenage, uh, kids speeding up and down the street, but they don't want that out there. We want to be re- respectful of that. It, it's more the larger, you know, where we've got, you know, larger information to communicate. You know, as, uh, you know, like on Bartlett Street, as the signage goes up and the, uh, and the information there is, is, comes back to share. It's a, it's a, a, a good place to, um, uh, to put that information out there so people can, uh, can see it. And, uh, and also if there's a question that comes in, you know, we can post it back up there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Julian. Uh, Tim?
Uh, just a procedural question. Um, so now we're going to talk. About the, the recommendation that the town administration made. Then we're going to hear from the public and then we're going to have another discussion.
No, 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 what, what I was suggesting at this stage here is that we're simply doing informational questions to clarify our understanding. Of town staff's recommendation. Following that, we'll hear from the public to get, uh, their input and concerns. And then once, uh, members of the public have had an opportunity to speak and express their opinions. Then we would have what I would call a, a more deliberative discussion among the board. So at this stage, I just want to limit the, uh, the discussion to, uh, Questions for information or clarification about the recommendation that was offered by town staff.
Cause I just, I'm just anticipating a lot of the questions from the public being around a traffic safety, uh, committee. And of, like to wait till after the public comments to address that very specific issue. Where if we address it now, maybe we could answer a lot of the questions that the public may have about that beforehand.
Uh, uh, you know, to the extent that the staff recommendation, uh, uh, there's been commentary made about. The, the suggestion that has been, uh, offered by members of the public that we need to form a traffic and safety committee. Um, and the, uh, response to that at this time is that. Uh, we're through the master plan, uh, formulation process. We're now proceeding with the implementation process with the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Charged to look at that master plan, which includes, and I'm looking at it right here, uh, section, uh, uh, on transportation. Uh, which includes consideration for, for townwide traffic and, and, and safety. So, uh, um, my understanding of town staff's recommendation is that. Um, the implementation committee essentially, as part of their process, will be looking at that. And, uh, would have the first opportunity, I guess, to research or evaluate it. And then provide recommendations for how to move forward, which may or may not, uh, include. A recommendation to form a standing committee on that specific topic.
I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't, I don't know if I agree with that. Um, like, I, I, I think, I think it, we're. Effectively avoiding having a conversation specifically about the traffic safety committee.
Well, I, I don't think, we're, we're, we're not going to.
You're passing the conversation. You're passing the, you're passing the buck.
What, what I'm doing is.
Do, they have to do it and, I, I'm, I'm just, I've heard so much from the residents about this being a very specific issue. That the residents want to discuss, and I think it's a disservice to the residents if we do not have a conversation specifically about a traffic safety.
And I, I don't, I don't intend not to have that conversation, but I, what I wanted to do was get the staff recommendation. Hear the input from the public. And when the public, uh, input has been received. The board can follow with the discussion that you want to have. And it may not be as efficient, uh, a- as, as we'd like. But, uh, there certainly has been a lot of, uh, Uh, a request for the public to have an opportunity to speak in a public hearing format. So I'd just like to give them the opportunity to, to make those statements. And then with all of this information, the town staff recommendation and the input from the public. We can have the discussion among the board about how we think we want to proceed.
All right, that was my question, I, I just didn't understand the answer that you gave at the beginning.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry if I was unclear, yeah. It certainly is my intention to have the discussion that you're looking for, Tim.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Uh, any other questions from, uh, Leslie?
Okay, this is a follow-up on something that Julian had brought up. Um, so. You know, when, when people send in questions to you, Scott, for example, and you, you answer, you post your answer on it. It's not a two-way conversation, but if somebody has a follow-up question about it or feels like they would like more detail, they could write to you again. And then you would just add that additional information on to your original post.
Correct, correct, there's a need for clarification, be happy to add more information. Um, the, the, the goal is to get what we do as staff currently out there to everybody as opposed to individual conversations. You know, Chief Lively gets an email about a concern with, uh, sidewalk safety, you know, he sends it to me and, and the town engineer. We, we loop in, you know, the administrative office and we formulate a response. I think it's nice that the residents will all have access to those responses.
Okay.
And just to, to follow on that, I, I would imagine that depending on the substance of a particular communication that you receive from the public. There might be some one-on-one follow-up just for clarification, uh, before. That the webpage on the town website would be, uh, you know, populated with that information, just so that it is comprehensive or complete. Or so that the, the, uh, the circumstances fully understood before the response is formulated, right? Okay, uh, very good. Then, uh, any other questions from board members concerning town staff recommendation? And seeing none, uh, we'll proceed to the public comment portion. And just to review, uh, uh, for public comment, if you're on the Zoom application, you can raise your hand. Uh, if you wish to speak during public comment, um, if you're on a phone. And I don't think I see anybody on the phone at the moment. Uh, if you were dialing in by phone, you could, uh, hit star nine. Uh, to have the effect of raising your hand. As we say, this is on the topic of, uh, the traffic and safety concerns that have been expressed. We ask you to confine your comments to that topic. Um, when, uh, I bring each person in, please first, uh, state your name and, and address. And you will have, uh, three minutes to speak. Uh, and I'll have my timer ready, so, uh, the first person in line here is, uh, John Wickstead. John, I'm going to bring you in.
Hello?
Hello, John, can you please state your name and address?
Yes, John Wickstead, I live on two Stirbrook Lane.
Yep, please proceed, John.
You guys are, uh, used to hearing from me by now, um. You know, the tenor of the conversation here has been that, you know, sadly, that, that, you know. Town Hall is busy with other concerns, which we certainly appreciate. But the, the sort of, you know, underlying implication that we're bothering Town Hall. Or that multiple people asking the same questions over and over again is an irritation for them. It is really disappointing to me, you know? I understand that you have to explain the limitations of the truck exclusion law multiple times, and you may find that irritating. If people are asking the same questions over and over again, it's because the problem is not getting solved. This is not an irritation, this is a safety concern, you know? You guys all know, because we sent around the pictures, the night of the last meeting, we had an eighteen-wheeler stuck across Bartlett Street. I understand that the town is involved with litigation in Marlboro around the sewer. And that that has polluted our relationship with Marlboro. And it's a shame because this could be resolved if Marlboro and Westboro and Northboro could all get on the same page. And decide to let the trucks stay in the industrial zone. Unfortunately, the trucks are all now coming into the residential neighborhoods. And the underlying problem here is not that we need a website. The underlying problem here is that we recognize that the industrial traffic is bleeding into the residential neighborhoods. You know, the number of trucks that now use Stirbrook as a turnaround is ludicrous. I mean, this is a residential cul-de-sac street and we have eighteen-wheelers on a regular basis using it as a turnaround. This is a serious problem for our town. And the, I, you know, this sort of thought that we're adding extra work to Town Hall is really, really disappointing. And the tenor of the conversation that says, you know, we'll put your responses up on a website so we don't have to address them one by one. Is again disappointing. You know, we're looking for some help from Town Hall, we're not looking to fight with you guys. We'd like to all be on the same page and try and come up with some reasonable solutions so that our residential neighborhoods can stay residential. And I understand that that is a difficult conversation to have with Marlboro and with Westboro. And it's going to take some hard work and we're asking you to do that work. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, next up I have, uh, it's, uh, shown as Henry Sislicah.
I'm Suzie Sislicah, sorry, I didn't change it.
No problem, like, name and address, please.
I'm Suzie Sislicah, Emerson Road, I'm disappointed in no video, I wore my traffic safety vest for this hearing. Um, I just want to say, I really like the idea of the webpage, I think it's a great idea. I like the transparency idea, I like knowing who's going to take care of, um, the responses and comments. However, I think lacking the public input and the, um, advisory from the public is what is lacking. Um, there were new committees started during COVID right now, I know that you're overstapped, I know that there's a lot of stress. We're feeling it, and my kids, I've told you, home remote right now, I feel the stress too, I can't imagine having to work as well. Um, but other committees were started. I was told by, um, Mr. Kalin that the implementation committee was for a wishlist of what the town wanted. And was not in line with the traffic safety committee, because I was also very confused about how they would come together. Um, John, when you explained that traffic safety could come out of the master plan committee, I did really like that. I agree, I love the idea of that economic development committee, I think they could all work together. Um, but right now, I think not having that citizen advisory portion, which that could be it. Your traffic safety citizen advisory group without the needs of an official committee and everything that comes with it. Um, but I really think that you need that involvement with managing that webpage. Because that crosswalk on one thirty-five and North Gate, that wasn't approved the year before. Um, that, that all started when I started calling in about it. Otherwise, somebody should have told me that when I called in, um, right from the start. I was told that there was already a traffic safety committee, I have the emails of it. There was no traffic safety committee, I'm just, I'm very confused and I just want to help. If there isn't funding until fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, put me on the advisory board, I'll find a grant. I'll find you a corporate sponsor that'll pay for that, um, that lighted crosswalk sign to change the traffic patterns on one thirty-five. Um, as, um, Doctor Wickstead had just mentioned, we're, we're not on opposing sides here. We just want the best for our town and to work together. Um, so I'm sure my three minutes is almost up. I'm going to deal with the disappointment of the no video for my traffic safety vest, but I just wanted to mention it again so you can all picture me wearing it. Um, but, uh, thank you for this, the work that has been done, I do like the webpage idea. I just wish there could be more, um, involvement on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzie. Uh, next up I have, uh, Kristen Wickstead, uh, bringing you in, Kristen.
Okay, am I there?
Yes, Kristen, uh, name and address, please.
Okay, Kristen Wickstead to Stirbrook Lane.
Thank you, uh, please proceed.
Okay, hi, um, I had a question about the signs, um, that are supposed to be going up. Um, uh, outside the Amazon and FedEx facilities, um, do we, does John, Mr. Hodier have a, um, A time for that, like, can he give us a ballpark when that's gonna, um, happen? And then I can, I can just finish the other things I don't want to say and then you can get back to me. Um, cause I know he, he says soon and a few weeks, and that was like two weeks ago when he said that, so I just wanted an update. Um, and he also actually didn't use the word irritating, like my husband did. He used the word tiring when he was talking about, um, the fact that he has to explain what a, how a truck exclusion works. To a lot of different people. And, I mean, I think, I, I get that the, the pandemic is affecting the town. And I really, I'm glad we live in a well-organized town where Kristen Black is doing such an awesome job. Trying to get everybody vaccinated, um, but it's tiring for us to live on this street. And after being told, after we call in week after week and, and we've been bugging the planning board too. And still seeing Amazon trucks racing past our house every day, and these are not tiny trucks, they're eighteen-wheelers. That's all so tiring, um, but I just want to give you guys a little bit of perspective to that. Um, the pandemic is really affecting everybody and I actually had to. Write another letter about this recently. Um, my husband is a, a physician, he works at a major hospital in Boston. And he's, he's really on the front lines, he was luckily one of the first people vaccinated. But he's also constantly, every single day affected by this virus. So if, if, if it's bothering people a little bit more than it might have trucks going past their house. I think you guys should. should also keep in mind that everybody else's perspective has been changed by the pandemic also. So maybe it's a bigger deal, safety in general is a bigger deal for people when work isn't a safe place, but then you come home and your kid's going to school on a street where there's these huge trucks going past the school and your neighbor's kids are driving to school, and it's just, everything seems dangerous. So if you guys could just keep that in mind and just keep giving us our updates, we would appreciate that, all right? I do appreciate all the work you've done so far, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Kristin.
Through the chair, just respond to the update?
Yes, certainly, yeah.
Yeah, so just, just first of all, I just want to be clear. We're not irritated by folks coming in, and when I said tie, we want to find the most efficient and effective way to communicate, that's really what we're talking about here. But with regard to the signs, my understanding is they're on order, and it's really just a matter of them receiving them. As soon as we've gotten commitments from all the facilities, as soon as they're in, they're going to put, as soon as they receive them, they're going to install them. So I have a couple of calls to return today from one of the facilities owners that wanted to update me on where things are. So they're, they're trying to get them in as quickly as they can. I know I said in a couple of weeks, but that's basically what they're telling me. So they've ordered things, as soon as they're received in, the commitment is they're going to get them up immediately. So that's again, there's no reason to think otherwise, so they really want to get the signage up. Again, on paper, they've all committed to doing this, I don't get the sense that anybody's dragging their feet. So, so, you know, again, as soon as we get a little more information, happy to communicate that to you. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And I think I would, yeah, just like to comment on the, yeah, the, the mention of, of town staff being irritated. To be clear, it's, it's a question of irritation, it's a question of efficiency. And in some cases, we received the same or similar questions from different people through email and attempting to respond to each of them in real time has, is just become, you know, not a scalable way to approach the problem. And so town staff's proposal to try to consolidate this information on a webpage where anyone in town can refer to it, see the questions that have been asked, see the answers that have been given, see the supporting information that's provided along with those answers. Hopefully will help to make it a more efficient process and get the information communicated more completely and more clearly. So with that, next up for public input on this hearing, have Lisa Mocelli, Lisa, bringing you in. Hi Lisa, can you, you name and address, please?
Lisa Mocelli, 13 Maple Street.
Thank you, pre, please proceed.
All right, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Well, I'm actually going to bring up a couple of new things that we, we have even more traffic concerns regarding the Amazon in that there's going to be at least 1,800 vehicles, not trucks, but the people who are going to work are going to be filling those warehouses, the lower warehouse, I understand, is going to have robotics and perhaps 200 people in it, but the upper warehouse is going to have at least 1,500 people with 500 people on a a rotation, so you're going to have three different rotations every day, 24/7. So they're going to have to be addressed, and I know they're coming down Maple Street. So that's something that we can't wait, that can't be something to look at in 2022. That's something that's going to happen pretty soon. So for the questions of how we can manage this, I'm a little concerned to hear that the crosswalk lights for 20 and Maple are still being concerned, looked at. I've been asking this since 2012 to do something there. I've asked many times through those years, and I don't understand why a failed intersection cannot get these lights. But once the state says go ahead, it indicate to me that we really don't have the money for another light, and we won't until 2022. Well, that's really not acceptable. The lights are $7,500 apiece, six of them will cost $45,000. $45,000 could come out of a budget or be put into a budget this year coming up, and maybe we'll just have to remove one of the DPW trucks for it. But for that kind of money, which is very small change in the budget, we should be able to put six lights in operation on the town. So I don't want to hear, oh, we've looked at it, it's, it's, you know, we're looking at it for a couple of years from now. Safety has been put aside for years and needs to be addressed. So I hope that I see a little bit of that change in the budget, so I don't have to bring it up at town meeting. And and I think that's all I'm going to say right now, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a point of clarification in terms of the Maple Street. So that is, we're waiting for the state, as soon as the state gives us the approval, that's not waiting, that's relatively short money. That, that process for that, for that intersection will move forward, so. But in terms of like, as a blanket to start installing this all over town, we can do that. Again, that, that's a little bit larger conversation, a larger budget, but as far as this particular intersection, that would not be one that we would be waiting on. Okay.
Sorry, Leslie, did you have your hand raised?
I did, yes.
Is it just the informational question?
Yeah, I just want to clarify as well, that it's not that we are re, re reviewing it, it's the state reviewing it, it's not, we've not been sitting on this. We're hoping for good news from the state, we're not sitting on it.
The, the state has declined it and will not authorize it, but in light of the additional development down with Amazon, we've, we've pushed that issue. Again, we, we asked and got our legislative delegation to send a letter on our behalf to request that Mass DOT reopen and look at this again. So we're, we're cautiously optimistic that we're going to be able to proceed on that one.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have shown as Rachel Bernsweig, Rachel, bringing you in. I'm going to have to promote you to panelist, because I believe you're using an older version of Zoom, so hold on for a sec. This is, looks to be Mike, Mike, you're muted.
Hi there, thank you for taking my comments, Michael Bernsweig, Ford Jenkins Drive here in, in Northborough.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. And, you know, I just have to say, you know, a little perspective, my, my family and I built our home here in Northborough. It's a little over 15 years ago, 2005 in, in and around there. And let's face it, this is not the same town it was 15 years ago. There's been quite, quite a bit of development, which is, is good and bad, you know, for a residential community, and I think a lot of, a lot of this structure that, that needs to be in place is just starting to, to be formulated. And, you know, on a personal level, I, I really feel as if the residents' interests are very much subservient to a lot of the commercial interests. You know, it's just, just my gut feeling, you know, that's, that's how I feel, but I just want to say, as far as, you know, the topic of safety. Obviously, a lot of, a lot of the discussion has been theoretical, a lot of studies, a lot of reviews, a lot of documentation, a lot of people. But the reality of, we haven't even started yet with all of this commercial development in and around this residential neighborhood. And at the end of the day, just days ago, we already had an 18 wheeler jackknife across Dr. Wickstead's lawn. Now, I'll be honest with you, if my fifth grader and seventh grader were out there playing with the Wickstead's kids, we'd be having a very different conversation, so, you know, the reality of the safety issues, it's here, we haven't even started, you know, there are the volume of traffic and trucks and people and everything that's coming at us is, we're at the tip of the iceberg, and I feel like we don't even have the right structure in place. I mean, if, if we're not reviewing what's going on and taking the correct actions, we're going to have some tragedies. This is right abutting a residential neighborhood. And, and now we're talking about other potential developments right, right up against the neighborhood. This is the same, same issues, and now the reality of everything that, you know, you hear all the residents bringing up all these concerns. Now we're looking at the reality of, these are, these are not pie in the sky crazy ideas, this is, this is real, real lives, real people, real families. And I just hope that the committee and all of the members of the town staff heed this warning from the residents to step up and take the right, the right actions to, to be sure that everybody is safe. So thank you for, for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Next up, I have Mitch Cohen, Mitch, bringing you in. Hi Mitch, can you state your name and address, please?
Sure, Mitch Cohen, 12 Whitney Street, hope everyone's doing well and happy 2021. I want to stay upfront, I have absolutely no public safety issues near my house. DPW does an amazing job clearing snow and keeping the roads clean, and we've got a great sidewalk. And a couple of times that I've used the, the feedback form on the DPW website, I've received great information, and issues have been dealt with very quickly, and I think the frequently asked questions type of list is wonderful, because that's a great way for people to learn about what's going on in town as a whole, in addition to their own neighborhood and their own concerns. I want to have a couple of thoughts about the master plan and the implementation committee. Master plan is really there for big picture stuff, proactive stuff. Safety is included in that, such as, you know, when should a road trigger a sidewalk or a crosswalk or a traffic light? When should a new construction project trigger something like that? These are really reactive questions and operational questions that are coming up that I think would distract the master plan implementation committee. So that's really my worry about the, the process that's being proposed here. I do think it makes some sense to create a public safety advisory committee on a temporary basis to deal with what looks to me as a backlog of issues, make some recommendations to the board and to the DPW, help them, aid them in, in putting this together, and then sending the finished copy of that, if you will, off to master plan to say, hey, here's the sum total of a number of issues, this might be helpful when you formulate zoning recommendations and so forth. That ends my input, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mitch. Next up, I have Terry Underwood, hang on, Terry. Hi Terry, can you unmute and state your name and address, please?
Hi, good evening, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I am Terry Underwood, 40 Maple Street, right across from Peaslee. So I had written a letter not that long ago, well, it feels not that long ago, and I want to thank you or the, the people that I had sent it to on the planning board and selectmen for their response. I do appreciate that, some of my information was not correct, as much as I did what I could for fact checking, so. But I do appreciate the response and, and just know that I'm also a voice here with my fellow neighbors, no matter what street or block we live on. So I also appreciate all of the, there were extra police patrols. Trucks are still there, not as much coming up and down. It's really hard to take a picture of a license plate, so I, I just want to add that in. So I guess I'm really here to add a voice, very pleased to hear, very pleased to hear that a light will be going in at 20 and Maple. I can't tell you how dangerous that can be, and it doesn't matter the time of day when cars try to go around another, when someone has stopped to let someone go in the crosswalk. So I am, I'm very grateful for that and want to encourage people to keep keep trying on this board and in public to have the rest of the other, whatever intersections to go in, and hopefully I can be part of that help. So I'm asking, is there somebody else to give voice so that it's not just coming from the town? I'm going to guess that Senator Eldridge or Representative Gregoire have heard a lot from us, but is, is there anyone else at the state level where we can add a voice? And thank you, everyone, and I'm so sorry for the Wicksteads for the truck incident happening. I walk on those trails, and so I know the first several feet can be considered town property or but, you know, when you have to walk on the edge of a road, it's it's, it's scary, so I share in those concerns and, because I so enjoy the trails all around there, so it's not uncommon for me to be walking there. So I'm here adding my voice and asking what else I can do, and happy to be a part of the solution. And so happy 2021, everyone, thank you.
Thank you very much, Terry. Next up, I have Ann Bextrom.
This is Ann Bextrom, you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ann, could you please state your address?
Sure, yeah, 152 Bartlett Street. And I was just looking for clarification from John regarding the signage that he's been talking about that was ordered and is going up. Did we only order signage for the end of the two driveways, the Dewey Pile driveways and the FedEx Amazon driveway? Or did we also order signage for the intersection of Bartlett and Lyman? That would be directing trucks coming off Lyman that the preferred route is to go right towards 495, and that, I think, would eliminate some of this residual traffic, truck traffic that is going left down and through the residential area. And I had asked about this during the December meeting, and I don't know that I really ever got an answer. So that was one question that I have, and then, you know, I, I do think the John's idea of having that one page on the Northboro website to funnel all of these traffic questions and answers is a good idea, I worry a little bit about the the upkeep and maintenance aspect of that, I don't know who's, one person that's being assigned to, to manage all of that, but you know, it could be a bit of a heavy lift, I'm thinking, and then you're going to end up having to funnel the questions to the right people, specific people anyways. So that's basically it for now.
Okay, John, do you want to respond to the question concerning that Bartlett Lyman intersection and?
Yeah, so i- in terms of signage, so that, just so everybody's clear, the town is in ordering the signage. The, what we've done is we've designed the signage that we have requested for the facilities to install, they have agreed to that. They're ordering it and they will install it on their private property, so that's where things stand with that. As far as any kind of signage in the right of way, you heard the DBW director refer to the it's a, it's the manual of uniform traffic control devices, and so basically you can't put signage in a right of way on a, on a public way that doesn't comply with that. So we can't, we can't put signage up telling people not to go down the street unless it has a, an approved truck exclusion. So, so we're limited in terms of what we can put up for signage on a, on a real, on a public way directing traffic, so, so that is always an issue for us. I know this is, we, we talked to people a lot about this, is, you know, somebody said, well, can we put a sign that just says no trucks allowed? We can't do any, we can't do that, it's either a truck excluded area or it's not. And if it's a public way, that's not truck excluded, they can, you know, vehicles can go that way. So Scott, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that, but we just, any signage that goes up has to comply with the any signage that goes up has to comply with the, with the regulations, uh, about traffic control devices.
So we, we are adding some signage, um, at the end of Lyman Street on Bartlett Street. So vehicles facing the T intersection while they're on Lyman Street. We'll see, uh, diverting, uh, diverging Chevrons and a four ninety-five symbol with a, uh, right arrow. Similar to the four ninety-five right arrow, we're gonna be placing at Cedar Hill. Uh, it kinda gives the vehicles the, the horseshoe loop to go around. Uh, we are allowed to put up informational directional signs, uh, where requests have come out that say no trucks or trucks right turn only. We cannot do that. Uh, but we know, we are, we're aware of the guardrail that was damaged years ago. That guardrail is, um, not appropriately used, but Chevron signs there identifying, um, you know, that's a T intersection, a stop ahead sign is, uh, is, is certainly warranted at that location. Uh, it should be, uh, understood as well, uh, through the chair that the sign companies are so backlogged right now. We're having, uh, months of lead time to purchase signs. Uh, you know, there was a, um, a shutdown of manufacturing a while ago, a large backlog of it. And twice the orders as before because of all these signs you see at every playground, park, commercial venue that have COVID restrictions on them. Those have all been prioritized at sign manufacturing. So it's, it's a long lead time on these signs. It's not a, a lack of effort on our part. It's just their, their backlog.
Uh, Anne, you had another thirty seconds or so. Are you complete or is there anything else you'd like to?
Yeah, I'll just say, uh, you know, I think that would help somewhat if there are those Chevron signs that are directing, uh, traffic towards four ninety-five or Route twenty to go right versus left. But, um, you know, I don't know if the FedEx company up off of, uh, Beaman, if you've talked to any of the management there to, um, you know, make them aware of the problem such that they're having their trucks tend to not go left and to go right. You know, if we could just communicate that through their, um, executive management, maybe that's helpful. I don't know if that's already been done or not.
Have we spoken to the FedEx at Beaman?
Yeah, we've been concentrating obviously on, uh, on Bartlett Street, but, uh, but we're in the process of reaching out. There's several operators down there. It's, I mean, that's, you know, we, one of the reasons why if we were talking about like why a truck exclusion couldn't wouldn't work on Lyman is we have McKesson, FedEx, uh, there's New Core down there, there's Eagle Trailer. All those, all those operations that, that are down there. So, uh, we are reaching out and expanding our communications to them. What we've found actually in terms of the FedEx trucks that are on Bartlett is that, uh, in working with the manager on Bartlett, if there's two different Fedexes, there's FedEx Freight and there's FedEx Ground. And they, they operate like two completely separate companies. But what we're finding is it's more the trucks on Lyman Street that are being seen on Bartlett. So we are, we are opening up a dialogue with them. Uh, again, little different situation. You know, the facilities that were approved on Bartlett have the condition and the site plan approval about the turning restrictions. Not the case, uh, with the facilities on Lyman. But again, we're gonna try to work with them and, uh, encourage them to, uh, take the right, which is the conversation I had with the DPW director about putting the signage up. We can't say no left hand turn, but we can encourage folks, hey, if you're trying to get to four ninety-five, take a right, that's the most efficient way to get there. So that signage we can't put up. Uh, but yeah, we're gonna continue to expand the conversations.
Uh, thank you very much, Anne.
Thank you. Do I have any more time?
Uh, if you have one more comment.
All right, one, one more, uh, question that I had back in December was around our ability to put up signage around trucks not using their air brakes in this residential area. Because that's another big issue that we've been having is with these big huge trucks using their air brakes, um, also known as Jake brakes, I guess. There's no real reason for them to be using that and it is a big annoyance. For all of us in this neighborhood. So I didn't know if we had the capability of, um, investigating doing that. So I've seen it in other towns and states.
Yeah, through the chair, if I may, that is something, Anne, that we're looking at. It would more than likely require a bylaw in order to put signage up and enforce, um, but we are investigating that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Uh, next up I have Jen. Uh, Jen, I apologize if I get your name wrong, Scalise or Scalisi. Uh, let me bring you in and you can correct me.
Uh, it's Scalise. Jen Scalise. I'm at two oh six South Street. So I'm right at the downhill turn on South Street. And, um, I think we all have seen the, um, trailer that goes up and the speeds that happen. Uh, I've lived here for about three or four years now. And I've seen several accidents, pretty bad ones. And I know that I've been in touch with police multiple times and spoken to, uh, Mr. Sharpentier and others about these issues, reached out to selectmen. It seems that we have a lot of traffic issues and thank you all for all of the work that you're doing on those and on our COVID response and all of the other things that you're working on. I can see clearly that it would be a lot of stress to be stretched that thin. So to me, creating a safety and traffic committee that could address not only the new concerns as we move forward as our ma- master plan committee is supposed to do, but some of the lingering concerns that really haven't been addressed. And I totally understand that there's a backlog of ordering signs. But as a traffic and safety committee, we the, the committee could look into those issues and get the right signs on order so that we could most efficiently take care of it. I liked the idea of having something temporary just to get through that backlog. And then certainly I think that the website could be a really great resource. But there are a lot of smaller issues that have gone on far too long in some of the smaller neighborhoods that are not the big concern right now. And so it's going to take a long time to get to them and I'm very concerned, just as my neighbors are for my children's safety. And I know that there have been many concerns stated through many, uh, emails and, and comments around, surrounding this area, particularly since there is a park. And there are sidewalks going from the park to town. And that's something that we should take a look at, keeping those sidewalks safe. And certainly, again, I, I understand that you guys are working your hardest. So although you may say to us, yes, you're going to look into it, that might not be feasible. And again, for that, um, master planning committee not top on their agenda. But safety as a parent is my top agenda. And I really hope that I can help in some way or we can prioritize all of the safety concerns of the people that use this town, walking and enjoying the space that we have. I hope that we can look at it from a growing town point that we have young families moving in and we want to appeal to them. We want to keep them safe. And that's something that we need to prioritize as a town. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much, Jen. Next up I have Janine. I think it's Janine Callahan. If I got that wrong, Janine, please correct me.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Janine. Can you please, uh, state your full name and address, please?
Janine Callahan, sixth stirrup Brook Lane.
Yep, please proceed.
Um, so there are a couple of things that are resonating with me, um, as I listen to this, uh, this meeting. And I, again, I, I appreciate the, uh, the public hearing. I think it's awesome. But the first thing is, um, yeah, I have to say, I, I agree with a couple of my friends' comments that, um, we do feel like we're bothering the town. If, if it wasn't supposed to be received that way, it certainly is, um, uh, you know, that is not our agenda is to bother anyone, but we feel like we weren't getting anywhere and, and we consistently had to follow up. So again, I, I just, you know, I hope you all understand how that's being received on our end is that we're, we're a nuisance and we're bothering everybody and you all have much more important things to worry about on your agenda as we do. We're also dealing with COVID and the pandemic and our children. The next thing that's, that's, um, resonating with me and that I don't understand is why the town is so dead set against a traffic safety committee. You know, e- if you look at every other town's website surrounding us, they all have them. And they're all willing to help. I mean, as Suzie stated, you know, you have residents that are willing to help. We're not here to muck up the waters or make anything any more confusing, but y- you know, we're here to, to help. It, it's our town. It's our children's safety. It's the resident's safety and we just wanna help. I also, um, I do have one other, well, two other questions. The, the page that you guys plan on putting up on the website, when is that gonna be up and running and working and, and residents able to start asking our questions?
I believe that's a proposal, uh, this evening. And so, uh, it's kind of pending an approval of the board to go ahead and do that to some extent.
Okay, so hopefully we'll have an answer by the end of the meeting as to whether that is approved. And then, um, I guess, uh, another question is, um, you know, the, the town can reach out to a state legislature later for crosswalks, but not for a truck's exclusion. And I'm a little confused as to why that is. I mean, why can we ask for help for cer- certain things and not for others?
So, uh, through the chair, if I may, so some are, some are discretionary and some are not. The truck exclusion, uh, the regulations regarding truck exclusions are pretty straightforward. And, uh, but as far as, uh, a flashing beacon, uh, on the state's right of way, um, they have sort of general policies and guidelines, but they have discretion there. You know, it's like, uh, it's like changing a speed limit sign. And we don't have the discretion to change a speed limit. It's based on a, a, a speed and traffic study. So that's all heavily regulated, uh, whereas the stop, the flashing beacon, uh, is more, well, again, it's their, it's more their policy and their, and it within their discretion to allow something or not allow it. It's not black and white.
Okay.
Janine, you have about, uh, thirty seconds?
No, I'm good. I mean, I don't wanna sit here and take everybody's time. Most of my neighbors and friends have all stated basically what I was thinking. We've said it before. It's like Groundhog Day. You know, we're all still here in the same boat in this, this side of town with Amazon, FedEx, a Dewey pile, Gutierrez possibly building more warehouses. And again, we just, you know, I, you know, everybody says, you know, we keep asking the same question, same questions. And I feel that if we get stagnant, we're gonna be overrun here in this town. And maybe we're being pests of ourselves, but we don't know any other way of, of protecting ourselves is really what it comes down to. So if we're, if it's meant that we're gonna be pestering the town and the boards and the planning board and well, so be it. But again, Amazon snuck up on us because we didn't know about it. And now we know, and now we know what's, what's in the sightlines with Gutierrez and, you know, building roads over, or, you know, groundwater. And now our eyes are open. And again, if, if we feel if we get a little bit stagnant and we don't fight, then we're gonna be overrun. And this is not the town that we all chose to, to move to is, is, is a warehousing town. So.
Thank you very much, Janine.
Yep.
And next I have Carrie Martnik. Hang on, Carrie. Hi Carrie.
Hi there, it's Carrie Martnik, sixteen Hemlock Drive. Um, just a quick comment or a little bit of a question for me about master plan implementation committee. Um, I got a little nervous when it sounds like a bit of a catch-all for different things that we need help with or they need to pi- um, pinch hit for um, the, for anybody, I'm sure everybody on this call has read it. It's a two hundred and thirty-six page document with, uh, certainly enough things to do. And, uh, in looking at it, I, I've read it multiple times myself and people are really looking for things like downtown revitalization studies, economic development plans, affordable housing. So I get a little nervous to put too many things on it if there, you know, committees coming up with committees and things like that. Just something to think about. Obviously, creating subcommittees is not out of the realm of what they could do. I just, you know, we have so many things that residents have voiced that they wanna see happen in the town. Um, I just wanna make sure that we let that committee do their job. And, and really that's to serve as a liaison to the town boards and committees to help implement the plan and keep it moving forward and, and hopefully that can still happen. So that was the only thing, just hearing, thinking that sounded a bit like a catch-all for some of these things that we're strapped for time with. So the master plan implementation committee can take it on. Um, we really need them to stay focused. So I, I hope that's just taken into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. I don't have anyone else, uh, with hand raised. If there's anyone connected who hasn't spoken yet, and would like an opportunity, please raise your hand now. We've got Laura Folsom. Uh, hold on, Laura. Hi Laura, could you please state your name and address?
Hi, yes, thank you. Laura Folsom, um, for Laurel Avenue. In lieu of some of the comments that I've heard tonight and listening to both sides, I would like to suggest perhaps we put a stoplight at where, where Lyman Avenue meets Bartlett Street. I think that would definitely slow the traffic down, slow the trucks down. And that way, perhaps as they proceeded down Bartlett Road, um, as they're getting, approaching Route twenty, maybe they would be going a little bit slower. I'm very, very concerned for the students and the families that live and attend school in this area. And I'm afraid it's just a matter of time when we have a terrible accident. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Laura. Uh, is there any comment from town staff about that proposal? Cause we've just also had mentioned that, uh, putting in lights and, and other kinds of, uh, uh, traffic regulating devices is subject to, uh, various kinds of approvals or, or regulations. Scott, yeah?
Clearly the manual and uniform traffic control devices, um, identifies what warrants of a stop control, signalized intersection. And they specifically state that stop control on a through street shall not be used for speed control. Um, it's just not a safe procedure of a, a use of a stop sign. So we've had that request in other locations as a means of traffic calming. And, and they specifically cite that that's, that's not a recommendation.
Okay, so that would apply either stop sign or a light, uh, for that.
A, a light requires a lot more of a, a, a warrant analysis for determination. Uh, stop control is sort of the, the knee jerk reaction at times to try to slow traffic down and be a, um, traffic calming mechanism. There are other traffic calming mechanisms that, um, other towns and committees have looked into, um, through complete streets. But stop signs is, is, is not one of them.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that clarification, Scott. Uh, I next have, uh, Anthony Zaitin. Hold on, Anthony.
Hi, it's Laura. Can you hear me okay?
Uh, yes, Laura, we can hear you. Could you please state your full name and address?
Sure, it's Laura Zaitin, seventeen Franklin Circle. I appreciate all the feedback and that you're gonna be, you know, addressing all these safety concerns. One area that I did wanna mention are the sidewalks in town. I noticed at Maple Street between, uh, Ridge and I noticed at Maple Street between Ridge and High School, there's no sidewalk there. It's a really rough area. And it just really dawned on me that there's a lot of areas in town that I think could benefit from sidewalks. So when you are going through these other safety and traffic concerns, if we can just prioritize where the best places are for sidewalks. And that was all I wanted to share tonight.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. And uh, last call, if there's anyone who hasn't had an opportunity to speak and would like to, please raise your hand now. I think everyone is connected through the Zoom app. Nobody's connected by phone. And that will do it. Thank you very much. For the public input. This point is a public hearing. I guess I always uh never quite sure whether we need to do this formally or not, but uh. Um.
It's a public input session by the board. It's just not like you have to formally close the public hearing portion of it. This is just your taking input, right?
Okay, very good. Thank you, John. Um, so we had the recommendation from town staff. Uh, we've had, uh, we've heard from members of the public who've expressed their concerns about. Traffic safety in various locations, uh. Uh, many of those directed to the Bartlett Street area, but some directed to other areas in town. Actually, uh, yeah, before I do that, let me just mention, uh, in addition to the public comment offered tonight. We had a written input um from Jennifer Scalise, who did speak this evening. Additionally, the board received uh written requests from Judy Boyle at ten Hawthorne Circle. Robin Gallagher at twenty-seven Meadow Road. And Rebecca Foley Mahoplis at six Mohican Ave. Uh, all basically uh. Uh, asking for uh traffic safety committee or review board as they all phrased it, so. Discussion by the board. Um, we have the, as I said, the proposal by town staff. Um, they've been addressing um some of the specific issues on an ad hoc basis in a sense. And continue to work with the uh um. The uh. Uh, companies in the uh upper end of Bartlett Street. To try to resolve any continuing issues. Uh, the suggestion was to try to consolidate some of the communications and information on a town website page. And then somewhat longer term to work through the master plan implementation committee. One of uh, one of that committee's concerns uh of the several concerns that they have. In an understanding of uh um traffic and transportation uh in the town. Um, some of the respondents we heard from tonight uh have continued to advocate for a specific traffic and safety committee. To to be uh somewhat uh. More quickly responsive to some of the concerns than might be the case through the implementation committee. Nevertheless, uh, um, establishing any committee has uh costs involved in terms of. Uh, staff time uh to support the efforts of that committee. Um, so I'll invite uh any comments or questions from members of the board. I had Scott Rogers with his hand up first. Tim, you're first.
All right, thanks, Jason. So uh, I guess from, you know, my thoughts on this and and trying to frame uh the best way to proceed. I think collecting on issues through the form-based input like we see for report an issue. You know, should continue to happen because that provides some structure. Uh, to en routeing that that issue to the appropriate uh staff member department. And enhancing the website to have. A frequently asked questions like uh format to communicate back out what's happening. I think that's, those are great ideas. Uh, in that proposal, I think we're still saying that there, if there is an immediate safety issue. Those should be continued to be reported uh to either Public Safety or DPW. Um. As as been occurring, uh, that, you know, if there is an immediate um immediate traffic or immediate safety issue. Residents should report those and and those immediate concerns. What what I'm struggling with is, you know, in between that where we have a section of town. Let's continue to use Bartlett where a number of issues have grown over time. Um, that, you know, what's the best way to address those? And I think over the, you know, last few months, we've gone from individual reports to more coordinated activity from different town staff and departments. And building up a number of actions that have been taken specific to that area. And I think that would continue to occur, that if there was a particular area in town where issues were building up. We'd divert additional attention through town staff, departments, boards and committees to, you know, like we're doing uh uh around Bartlett. Let me put a pin in that for a second. And then say then for longer term planning topics involving traffic volume. Walkability, sidewalk extensions where it's longer term planning, I think those go to. Longer term planning committees, whether that's elements out of master plan implementation or capital. Um, with the finance uh committee or planning boards or in in adjusting bylaws or whatever, that's that's planning. Those back to collections of issues like Bartlett. I don't see where the the um um resolution of those collections of issues. Um, can wait for uh a a larger planning body. I think they they need to be addressed in some some sooner, you know, address sooner in some way. What I'm struggling with is I don't see how another committee. Provides that that method to address those issues. Um, I'm. And and that's 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 where my mind is at the moment is what's is to approach it the other way. Instead of saying, we need a traffic and safety committee. For me, I'm trying to say, what's the best way to move forward with the collection of issues like we see on Bartlett? And that's 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 where I'm 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 listening to the input. And I want to hear, you know, you know, your guys' um thoughts on what's the, what's a better way to address those issues? Um. And I I think I'll leave it right there for now.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Uh, Tim, you'd had your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just want to thank John and everybody else for all the work they've they've done, and I think the website is a is a. Is a great start. I think that's that's a way to disseminate information to to people in a in a somewhat timely manner. Um, you know, I know there's been, I agree with some of the comments from the residents that there has, you know. There is, there is um. The opinion that the the town doesn't need a traffic safety committee. Um, and ultimately, you know, after having, speaking with residents um pretty consistently over the last, you know, four to six weeks. Um, there isn't, there is a uh um. The the feeling in the community that a traffic safety committee is needed and, you know, ultimately. Um, you know, my responsibilities fall with with listening and advocating for for the residents. Um. So I just want to go through um some of my thoughts on on a traffic safety committee. Um, I know it's just semantics, but a lot of people call it traffic and safety. Um, I just think it's traffic safety. Once you get into and safety. I think that introduces a whole realm of other things that I'm sure Chief Parenti has. Uh, things under control um in the and safety department, so it's really a traffic safety committee. Um, the first thing is um. Like we have for the diversity and inclusion committee, um, we have a twelve month um period for for that committee. I think if we were to implement a traffic safety committee, uh, that we do it for for twelve to eight eighteen month term. Um, that way so that that it can prove that it adds value. It offsets the cost in the bureaucracy that the committee would would bring. Um, second, I I think it really needs to be, if we were to move forward with a traffic safety committee. Um, that it needs to be in local roads only. Um, not Route twenty, not any of the the state roads. I don't think it's appropriate to have. A traffic safety committee reaching out to the state and state reps representing the town. Um, third, if we were to have a traffic safety committee. Um, I think it'd be one of the most important things is is determining how the committee prioritizes issues. Um, we've heard from a lot, uh, not a, we've heard from. A select few people from the Bartlett area very consistently over the last three to six months. And my concern would be that those people would then get on the traffic safety committee. And they would only advocate for issues in the Bartlett Street area. The the committee needs to represent the community and there needs to be a mechanism in place. So that the issues that are brought before the committee are prioritized. So that people that get on the committee can't serve their own personal self-interest and then just quit or. Get off the committee like there. I think that's really important that if we're going to do that. Um, next, I think if we were to have a traffic safety committee, um, it needs to solve problems. Um, it can't present problems. We know what the problems are. Um, if the committee comes to the Board of Selectmen every week and list a slew of problems. That that that's just another layer of people complaining to the Board of Selectmen. That that's, that's just unacceptable. Um, if if there is a traffic safety committee, if people bring an issue to the traffic safety committee, they have to solve the problem. They have to bring a solution to the Board of Selectmen that's reasonable and can be be implemented. Somebody brought up sidewalks, you know, that's easy. We will put sidewalks everywhere. Who's going to pay for it? How are we going to get the money? Like that's, if you want to have a traffic safety committee, those are the issues that you need to address. Um, next, um. We've heard from quite a few people, um, when we had the vote on on the master plan implementation committee. Um, we've heard a preference for new voices. Uh, Julian Hirsch actually voted against the recommendations for the master plan implementation committee. Because there weren't enough new voices. Um, if we have a traffic safety committee, um, does it have to be all new voices? Is that the only way that we're to get full support for the traffic safety committee? By having all new voices. So that means we can't have anybody from any other committee. We can't have anybody that's run for anything. It's got to literally be all new voices because that is what we've heard from people. Um, it's got to be advisory only. Um, doesn't have a budget. It's just you you go out, you find the solutions, bring them to the Board of Selectmen. Um. Obviously, I hope people realize that if there is a traffic safety committee that you have to follow open meeting laws. Um, so that would prohibit a lot of the 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 negative comments that are made on Facebook and and fake Twitter accounts like that. That would have to stop if you you've served on the on the 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 traffic safety committee. Um, I would expect it would report, you know, directly to the Board of Selectmen. Um, and lastly, would the would the the traffic safety committee also? Um. Consider pedestrians and cyclists in town? Oh, and and lastly, we would have to determine the makeup of the committee, who serves on the committee and to other people's points. As far as admin uh in town staff time. Um, you know, for example, if if Chief Liver were going to be on the committee, um, we would need to take something off of his plate. And who makes the determination of what comes off his plate, when it comes off his plate? Um, because you just, you to John's point, you just can't continue to dump. Or sorry, dump is the wrong word. Ask um town staff to serve on all these these committees without removing stuff from their plate. So, um, you know, the. If people in staff were to serve on the committee, there would have to be a discussion on what part of their responsibilities get taken off of them. Um, so if if we were to consider all of these things and put them in place, I think a traffic safety committee would make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, any other members of the board? Leslie.
Okay, um. My colleagues on the board have made some very thoughtful comments. Um, and yet we've heard, you know, requests for this uh for the past few months from, I would say. You know, a select few people uh who feel very strongly about it. And I guess I'm looking at it a little differently than Tim is right now because. I would prefer to go with another starting point, which is John's recommendation. And start with the the town page and see what the value added is with that. Does that work the way we hope it works? Do people actually use it, see it? Uh, get satisfaction from it? Um. Feel that um town staff is hearing their concerns. Uh, that the information is posted timely. Uh, you know, there are some logistical things with working a page like that, as one of the callers had mentioned, you know, it is, it could be a lot for someone to have to manage. But if if, to me, it's a great way to start because. As someone else mentioned when they called in, what about the lingering issues? Well, let's get those lingering issues on that page. Um, get the new issues on that page. Uh, let's have some sort of functionality where. The uh requests or the comments that are made are are acknowledged and it's obvious that they have been seen and acknowledged by staff. And maybe there's some sort of timeframe put on when someone can expect an answer. Um, but I do like the idea of the town page. I like the idea of using our town website. We have improved the town website. David Kane has worked very hard to make it a very readable, very pleasant website to use. Let's use it. It's a great way to disseminate information. Um, just because someone lives on, let's say, uh, Davis Street, doesn't mean they don't have an interest in a Bartlett Street issue. Uh, so I think it's important for everyone to be able to see the answers to all these questions. Um, and know that they have been asked, um, and it's been answered. Um, I've, you know, been on the board and answered a lot of the same questions over the years and wondered, you know, gee, how can we? Get these answers out to everybody so we, everybody is satisfied that something has been addressed. I don't really, I mean, it's obvious to see from replays how many people view our meetings, but. I'm not convinced that our meetings are viewed by the great majority of the community. But I think if we can steer people toward the website and announce on Town News that we're going to have a page available. That people are more than welcome to uh to submit their concerns, whether it's a lingering concern, a backlog concern. New concern that it will be acknowledged and it will be addressed, and I'd like to see how that works. Um, if it looks like it's going to be logistically difficult or too much of a burden on the already thin staff that we have. Uh, then maybe we look at whether or not another committee is needed. Now, as far as another committee, um, whether someone submits a concern through the town website. Or whether there is an issue that's brought from the traffic safety committee, either way, it involves the same staff person. To have to look at this. It doesn't change how staff is going to approach it and work on it. It still has to, it's still going to be funneled to the same person. But with the use of a town website, everybody gets to see what's being worked on and everybody gets to see the reply. And people can be reminded on a regular basis through Town News, through our uh meetings, through cable. Uh, that we have this site and that people are welcome to take a look at it. So I would recommend that we go with John's recommendation. I think it was a very thoughtful approach in his discussion with staff. I like what I heard tonight. And um, that again, longer uh term issues, uh wide ranging issues uh. Should be handled by implementation committee. And again, we'd have to work on how things get funneled to to that group. So there are some logistics, but I I do like the idea of what John has presented here uh this evening, and I'd like to. Uh, have a go with that and see the value added to that first before we implement a new committee at this time, based on what's going on uh with the town and and staff. On COVID and so forth. And and believe me, callers are not an irritant at all. I don't think anybody should feel they're dumping on us, but. I think they have to realize that it's one of many things going on in town and staff can only do so many things at once. So I do think a town page would be a wonderful way to start.
Thank you, Leslie. Julian.
Julian.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I. I'm trying to sort through all that I've heard tonight and, and it has been a lot. It has been a lot over the last few weeks. Personally, right now, I don't know. I would like to actually get, get more information. We haven't heard. Anything from Amazon yet about how their operation is going to work and the impact. That's going to have. Um, I know that Planning Board has invited CMRPC to talk about some of these issues, and I'd like to hear what they have to say. Um, and also. You know, I just kind of randomly Googled. Uh, traffic safety committees in Massachusetts and a lot of towns have. Traffic safety committees. And I would like to be able to. Reach out to Westboro or Grafton or any of the towns that come up and. And see how, how these committees are. Benefiting their town and how they're actually constructed. And I think that maybe that's a, a big question that we have right now is. How, how would this committee? What would it look like? So. I know everybody wants an answer tonight, but I think we've got to. Think this through a little more, um, not. Close the public hearing and. Um. Kind of sort through all this information.
Uh, thank you, Julian. Um, I, I, I think the public hearing is, is essentially closed for, for this evening's business. Um, we do have some decisions to make here. Um. So let me take my crack at it here. Um. Like Julian, I also Googled traffic safety committee. Um, got numerous, numerous hits. And as I drill down. Onto those pages and look at who's on the committee invariably you see. It's the town manager, town administrator. It's the police chief. It's the fire chief. It's the Public Works Director. It's the traffic engineer. It's the town safety officer, if they have such a thing. Um. There's. As many or more. Town staff members. On those committees than there are citizen representatives. If they have citizen representatives at all. So. Um, the, the circumstance, quite frankly, is that. Traffic and safety or traffic safety, however you want to phrase it. Um, is a complicated issue. There's a lot of, uh. Um, statutory or regulatory issues that come into play with some of the, uh, the measures that might be undertaken. And, uh, I'm not convinced that a group of citizens, uh. Collectively have sufficient expertise. Um, or experience to go off and research a lot of those kinds of issues on their own. Without some assistance or without some. Uh, support by staff members who are experienced in those matters and knowledgeable about those matters. For the committee. Overall, to be successful and efficient in its mission. Uh, so from that standpoint alone, uh, and. As we've expressed in the past, uh, the, the tremendous workload that's already being placed on town staff. Uh, to take care of their, you know, day jobs. In addition to the additional burden that COVID is placing on everything. Uh, I don't think it's reasonable at this time. To, uh, to charge a committee for that specific topic. When it's essentially going to be. The town staff members who. Will really be doing a great deal of the work to. Vet any, uh, circumstances that may be safety issues. And to do the research or, or, you know, supporting investigation. Uh, to arrive at whatever the solutions might be if there is a solution. In comparison to that, considering that town staff ultimately fields a lot of these. Uh, um, you know. Concerns that are submitted, uh, and have to respond to them and respond to them in a knowledgeable way. Uh, I think as a, as an immediate step we could take. Uh, would be to take, uh, um, take the recommendation of forming. Some additional, uh, centralized information on the website. That can, uh, essentially respond to frequently asked questions. In a complete, uh, and fully, uh, uh, fully informed and supported way. Uh, so that people have that information, uh, you know, at hand. If there are any follow-up questions to some of those kinds of issues, then certainly. Town staff can, can follow up to providing other needed information, but I think from an efficiency standpoint. Um, uh, you know, we do get. Concerns or requests that, that have been submitted over the years for. Uh, additional crosswalk support at certain locations. Or, or sidewalk improvements or extensions. Um, you know, some of the answers to those inquiries. You know, haven't changed, but. Every once, you know, over time, you, you get those inquiries again. And I think it's, uh. It'll be helpful at least to, um. To have some of that information in a centralized location. With the responses and, uh, and be able to, um, provide that service. To the town residents so that, uh, that, that information is more readily available. Um. It may be that there are certain situations, um, that. Um, perhaps. Require more consideration, uh, and, and will perhaps need to come before the board for some kind of. Consideration or may even go to town meeting in terms of, uh. Providing funding for a particular mitigation or remediation for a safety issue that we encounter. Then i- in those circumstances, in those kind of one-off situations, then. We can certainly address those as they come in. Um. A- as far as, uh. Broader or more comprehensive solutions are concerned, then I think I. Am of the mind that, uh, the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Uh, is at least the initial vehicle, uh, for those issues to be considered and. For further recommendations to come out, uh. With the, um. You know, the consideration given not only to. What the problem might be, what potential solutions might be, but also taking into account, uh. Um, the priorities and trade-offs and, uh, costs and benefits, uh. Um, everything, uh, I, I say this from time to time. Um, you know, you. You can do everything you want, but you can't do, you can do anything you want, but you can't do everything you want. There are limits to. Time, money, staff, other resources. And you have to make some priorities and trade-off decisions. And when I say that here right now. I'm not suggesting that safety is unimportant. I'm not suggesting that we're shunting safety aside. I am saying that. The specific proposal. To form a traffic safety committee. In my mind, isn't. The, the correct way or, or the. Uh, viable way for us to approach these problems at the current time. With the current, uh, uh, circumstances and burdens that are already placed. On, uh, municipal operations. So. Yes, Tim.
Um, can you just? Walk me through if a resident has a concern about traffic? How would that process work? I'm just confused. It's like, uh, because I'm going to be on the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Are, are. How is the Master Plan Implementation Committee going to be? Involved in resolving traffic issues? On Bartlett?
I, I, I don't think the implementation committee is providing the direct resolution. I think the implementation committee. Is giving, uh, uh, more. Drill down consideration for some of the transportation and traffic. And safety issues. And providing kind of further recommendations to town staff. Uh, and to this board about. Um, what priorities might be and what, what measures we might want to, uh. To consider. To address those.
So a resident would go. Make a submission on the website. It would get answered by town staff, get posted to the website. And that would be, there would be no. The Master Plan Implementation Committee would have no part in that process.
Uh, I, I suppose it depends on the specific concern. I mean, there are some. What I would consider to be. Very localized issues, um. That wouldn't perhaps be a broader concern that. The implementation committee would have to. Uh, take under consideration.
Well, I, I see like the, the implementation committee, like with, with the, um, the, the, the Kimball Sand. Um, project that's going on by Northwell Crossing. At some point, that's going to end. At some point, something else is going to go in there. I could see the Master Plan Implementation Committee saying, these are the types of things we'd like to see in there. This is the impact it would have on traffic. And these are the remediations we'd like to put into place in order to, um, effectively. Manage and control that traffic. Like I could see the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Doing that. But if a resident has a concern on Northgate. And. The, the traffic that, that, that goes down Northgate. Like the Master Plan Implementation Committee has no. Role in resolving the problem on Northgate. Correct?
Uh, Scott Sharper to your DPW. Yes, you have something?
Uh, yeah, through the chair, um, you know, in, in a former public works position. We had a master plan implementation committee. They broke out into a handful of subcommittees with. Focuses. One was on downtime revitalization. One was on. Uh, pedestrian and traffic improvements, um. And I came on, uh, to present. Concerns focused areas where there are issues, global issues that have been presented to the Public Works Department. Ie, crosswalk safety in and around schools was one of the issues they had. Um, they had no idea that I had had a dozen reports of, of crosswalk safety issues around the schools. They brought me in. I gave them an update and an executive summary of. What's been going on since my tenure from a traffic perspective. So they. Got a little bit of a, um, a sense of what neighborhoods are, are reporting.
So. We could see a traffic safety committee be born out of the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
That's not uncommon. I'm sorry.
Potentially, yes. Potentially, yes.
Okay, I'm, because I, John, I'm just. I get questions from residents on this stuff and I, I just need to know how to direct them to.
Yeah.
Solution.
I, I guess.
Issues.
Yeah, look, I guess where I'm, where I'm coming from is, look, we, we have a master plan implementation committee. I imagine coming out of that is going to be a lot of goals, objectives and potential. Initiatives and committees. And I just want to have a. Coordinated effort. And process by which the town is going to, and the board is going to determine. What are those priorities and where do you want staff to be focusing and spending their time on? As opposed to, you know, just adding committees. It, there's lots of well-meaning and, uh, committees that you can add. But to the point that was made, look, the reality is, in, in terms of traffic safety. It's going to be the police chief, the DPW director, myself and engineer. Uh, you know, uh, you heard probably three or four suggestions tonight about why don't you put up a sign that says this, that'll solve the problem? Well, there's lots of regulations and rules that govern what you can and cannot do, where you can do it and, and how you go about approving that stuff. So I just want, you know, if, if we're going to form a traffic and safety committee, then we need to be clear. What exactly it is, how it's made up, how, and, and, and. You know, what is that priority in relation to whatever else is coming out of the Master Plan Implementation Committee? You know, right now we are, I mean, we're thin. We're, we're a very thin organization to begin with. But, you know, we're particularly thin and spread very thin right now with the pandemic and all the, all the issues that that's bringing forward to us. But on a day-to-day basis, if someone was, is asking for a stop sign or a crosswalk or. As a question about a sidewalk, that's going to be handled by staff on a day-to-day basis. It is, but if you want to get into, you know, should we become a complete streets community? Uh, because it's great. You can get grants to do things like. Flashing walkways. Yep. Okay, that's great, but the reality is those grants come with a ton of strings and other expenses. And you need to be very clear about what you're doing, why you're doing it, and what the implications are. Um. You know, again, it's, it's going to be, the staff is going to be the ones that are going to be doing most of, of this. What I'm looking for is I'm looking for some larger direction coming out of the Master Plan Implementation Committee about. What are, what are the focus areas that we want and what are the best ways to address those, uh, those items? You heard another person comment about, you know, we just need to add more sidewalks. Well, but the other comment was made, look. We are limited in terms of resources to fix and maintain the sidewalks we have now. We can add more sidewalks. Absolutely. But, you know, we need to. Someone's got to figure out, well, how are you going to pay for that? And how much does it cost? And there's, uh, how is it going to be engineered? There's. Right-of-ways and, and easements that are taken. I mean, that's all staff. It's all going to be staff. Right now, we know we have sidewalks that need to be addressed. And, you know, we're having difficulty. It's been the top priority of this board for the last four or five years. That we need additional funding from the state under Chapter ninety to address roadways and, and sidewalk improvements. The other alternative is we can raise taxes. So if the Master Plan Implementation Committee tells me this is a priority. And, and the board and says, yep, we want to raise taxes to add more sidewalks and to fix sidewalks. Then we can put that together. Again, it'll be staff that puts all that together. But. Look, what we always try to do for you is when you, when you tell us, hey, listen, this is where we'd like to go. Our job as staff is to research the, the issue or the opportunity, the problem or the opportunity. To frame it up for you and to offer you a, a possible path of, of proceeding. But, you know, somebody with technical knowledge needs to frame these types of things up. And, uh, and that's going to be staff. That has always been and always will be staff under any scenario that you contemplate proceeding with tonight. Uh, you know, there is a role for citizen input, absolutely, in all these processes. That, that role is, you know, what are the priorities? You know, what are the overall arching goals and objectives? But then it's going to be the staff that has to put this stuff together, put, put meat on the skeleton of. Of what would it actually take to accomplish these goals? How much would it cost? There's opportunity cost to everything that you do. And so to lay all that out for, for the board. Um, I'm just, you know, I'm frankly concerned. You've heard me say this on multiple occasions that we keep adding. Uh, there's, we're constantly adding rules, regulations at the state and federal level onto us, and we're constant, and we're adding additional workload. With new committees and, and new initiatives, and that's fine. But there has to be a matching. Uh, increase in terms of resources because we can't just keep adding committees. And as well-meaning as the committee, as a traffic safety committee would be. The reality is it's going to be the staff that posts the meetings and the agendas and. And does the research and responds to ideas. Because, you know, people come up with all kinds of great ideas that, and that's, that's, you know, a, a positive thing, but. That those ideas have to be, have to be shaken out and the information. Uh, needs to be compiled, uh, and that has always been and will continue to be. The police chief, the DPW director, the engineer and myself. That's why we're here. Um, so. Again, we can do anything. We just, I just want to make sure that if we're going to be adding boards and committees coming out of Master Plan Implementation Committee, that we, we start. To understand what are we doing? Why are we doing it? And. How are we going to appropriately? Bring the resources to bear to make sure that whatever those endeavors and those goals and objectives are that they, that there's a chance to be successful. So.
Scott Rogers.
Yeah, so I think I'm, I'm back to, you know, in terms of the recommendations to establish, you know, better communications and, and status and, and more efficient communications. I think. I'm on board with that, with the recommendations. That's great. Um, and I know we have, you know, some. Immediate issues that are being worked. I guess I'm still. I don't. I'm, I'm still not at the point where I see that. Uh, a committee in front of the work that needs to be done. Committee, yeah, committee in front of the work that needs to be done anyway helps resolve any of the current issues that we have. I think. You know, it could set some agenda for future planning, but I guess my primary concern isn't as much future planning, but resolving current issues. And what's best, the best way to resolve those issues? And it's either, um, and, and I think it should be more efficient communication so everybody's understanding where things are at. But what? What I don't, I haven't heard in a committee is how that would help resolve the issues that we have. So from that standpoint, I'm, I'm more focused on getting issues resolved than establishing a. So from that standpoint, I'm I'm more focused on getting issues resolved than establishing another advisory group.
Thank you, Scott. Leslie?
Yeah, I agree with Scott. Um, and the more I think about this page, the more I like it. Um, I think that, again, going back to a previous statement that I made, whether a traffic safety group or uh, the town page is the vehicle for these kind of complaints and concerns, it's still going to involve the same staff. Everything is going to be followed for the same people, and it's going to require the same amount of work. So I don't necessarily see a a new committee right now being an advantage. Uh, but I do see a town page being a huge advantage because, one, if someone used the term bulletin board, and I think it's I think it's fantastic because it means that if we post everything that's being asked and post the replies, people can, one, go in there and see what's happening, and, two, they can see if it's already been asked before they submit a question. I think a lot of people in town would be surprised to see how many issues are actually being worked on, and that there is a history to a lot of these things, and that there are complications, there are rules and regulations. It's not that the town or the board of selectmen is sitting around doing nothing and just, you know, waiting for something else to happen, or we haven't decided to put it in our budget. No, there are a lot of reasons why some things can't happen. Um, so I feel that a town page would be a superb use of our town website, again, with the occasional prodding via town news and social media that this page is there. People should feel free to use it. So and with the information remaining there, I think it's it would be a wonderful uh, resource. I I, again, would suggest that we see what the value added to that is and 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 go from there. As per John and staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Leslie. Julian?
So, um, I, you know, I think we can all agree that the bulk of the work and the expertise comes from our staff. But what the citizens are saying is that they have expertise in how they're living with this. And that needs to be heard. And it needs to be heard, and they need to have their voice in how we prioritize traffic projects and sidewalk projects and and all the things that affect quality of life in a town. Um, so one, one thing that made sense to me tonight was Mitch Cohen's suggestion that it be a short-term advisory kind of committee that is, because let's, let's think this through. If the master plan implementation committee meets and forms a traffic safety committee, uh, then all of this discussion tonight is, um,
To be clear, the 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 implementation committee doesn't have the authority to form any, I mean, they can form subcommittees themselves to grapple with certain topics. They don't have the authority to form another committee in town for a particular purpose that would have any authority.
But they can recommend.
They can make a recommend. So I want to be clear. Yeah, they can't form a committee. They can make a recommendation that a committee be formed. Still have to come back to the Board of Selectmen to to make that decision.
And when, uh, you know, Tim asked this question last meeting, when is the master plan implementation committee going to start their work?
Uh, I don't know the status of the members of the committee in terms of uh, citizen members having uh, cycled through their uh, uh, oath of office and training for uh, uh, open meeting law and conflict of interest.
I'm sorry, I don't I don't have that right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Because
Again, part of part of it is going to be, um, when that committee is is operational is, again, it's another committee that we're going to need to staff.
Right.
So one of the things that we're struggling with is who is going to staff and how are we going to rotate staff through to support the committee depending on the direction that they go in? So that's a, you know, no whole nother committee that all these same folks that we talked about are going to have to provide assistance to, so. Because you can't just be the town planner. You know, it's gonna, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Julian. I apologize. I, you know, it just, we just can't just add, and, you know, here's here's another committee that now is going to meet, you know, on a regular basis. And, you know, it's gonna, we're trying to, one thing we need to figure out is how we're going to staff.
Yet, we're hearing a sense of urgency from a lot of people in town, a whole quadrant of town, and you know, I think I, as soon as we have answers to that, that would be very beneficial, I think. But the other thing that might be beneficial is if, um, if we can convey the the necessary imperativeness of addressing traffic as a very high priority for the master plan implementation committee. I, you know, I, like you, Jason, I looked at the transportation and the, you know, the um, mass master plan that was written up in January of twenty twenty. And life has just changed and and work has changed and how people walk around town has changed. And so I think that this is an area that deserves a very high priority if we are going to say that we're going to let master plan implementation committee be the body that addresses this.
Thank you, Julian. Uh, any other comments? Any other discussion? Any other questions? I think, Julian, to your point about, I think it was Mitch Cohen, right, who had broached the idea of a not a standing committee, but a temporary committee, twelve or eighteen months or something like that. The issue for me with that is that it's no different from a standing committee in the near term. You still have a committee. It still requires staff support. And whether it's a standing committee or a temporary committee makes no difference from from the viewpoint of how it needs to be supported uh, for something operating on that topic. Scott Rogers?
Yeah, I just, I keep coming back to, and and this will be kind of the last, the last bit that, you know, I I see either an existing committee or a new committee handle planning, but in terms of immediate or let me just say, immediate issue resolution, I don't see how committee uh, uh, accelerates the resolution of the of the issues. I think we have to look at ways that we can assist staff in communicating effectively so that everybody knows what's going on and then helping them, you know, make progress on the on the things that 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 they can by by helping with the prioritization of different projects and initiatives.
Thank you, Scott. Julian?
To to Scott's point, um, yeah, that's that's the real question. How how would a committee help? And that's why I I feel like we need more information. I think we need to hear from CMRPC. I think we need to reach out to other towns and find out how those how those committees are constructed. Jason, you and I both Googled, and if you look at those committees, it's it doesn't really necessarily say resident, resident, resident. It does, some are nine people, some are four people. And I'd like, I'd like some, I I'd like to get more clarification on the optimal way that Northboro could construct a committee like that.
The 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 fact is that we don't know how consistent any of these so-called traffic committees are across these towns. Some of them may have different charges. Some of them may emphasize certain aspects and not others. Um, and as, again, as I say, whatever they're doing, uh, they don't seem to be doing it broadly. Uh, there may be exceptions, but very broadly, the membership of these committees seems to be composed predominantly of town staff members who have expertise and knowledge in relation to safety matters. As I said, the fire chief, police chief, I'm I'm looking at whom I'm looking at Town of Bill Recka here. Uh, town engineer, uh, operation supervisor for the Department of Public Works, uh, somebody from the planning board, uh, designee from the Board of Selectmen. Um, chairman is the safety officer. So that Town of Bill Recka has a safety officer.
They're twice our size, that's why.
And they're twice our size and have that much more in terms of resources and staffing to be able to support something like that. Uh, Scott Sharper and Tier, DPW Director?
Yes, through the chair. So I I did a quick um, search through some towns and made some phone calls to get the composition of their committees and boards. Uh, Ashland, roadway safety, they have three staff, one board of selectmen, number two citizens. Grafton is a traffic safety. They have three staff, four citizens. Uh, Holliston, three staff, one board of selectmen, four citizens. Hudson is all staff. Sudbury is all staff. And Westboro had now they have an active transportation and safety committee um, focused on bicycles and pedestrians only. They have six and six, six staff and six citizens. Shrewsbury, Southborough, Maynard, Hockington, and Holden, and Wayland did not have traffic safety committees. I tried to find towns that were close and similar sized.
Yep, thank you. I appreciate that research, Scott. Um, I, you know, I'm not convinced uh, that that a that a committee uh, uh, predominantly or entirely composed of of interested residents is going to have the expertise uh, that's really needed for the mission of such a committee. It really does require staff members who have the suitable experience and knowledge. Um, at least, I mean, even to the point of just being efficient about how they go about their work and not going down certain rat holes potentially because of a lack of knowledge or a lack of experience and coming to a conclusion that isn't borne out by what statutes or regulations or practices permit, so. Um, I, yes, Leslie?
I don't want to cut you off. I just
No, no, no. You're fine, Leslie. Go ahead.
Yeah, um, I I actually I feel that we should kick this can down the road. I think that, uh, I don't, I'm not interested in deferring. I'd like to put a bid in for getting, uh, the town page going so that I, John, I'm guessing that David Kane would be the one involved with this as he was with the other parts of the uh, town website in designing a really interesting-looking page where certain types of issues could be categorized, so people could very easily see, you know, is it a Bartlett Street issue? Is it a, uh, you know, a stop sign issue? Uh, is it a Maple Street, whatever it happens to be? Um, but I think we just need to get going with it. I think residents, and I I do understand their concerns. I share their concerns. I just don't feel that a a new committee right now is the most efficient way of handling this because, again, we're still involving the same staff. So how can we more transparently go about this work? And to me, that would be this webpage. And I think we just need to get it going so that residents have somewhere to go to get this, so they can get started.
Thank you, Leslie. And any other comments? Any other questions? Julian?
So I think we all agree that the that the webpage is is a good idea. Um, uh, although, um, I I I would like to see it in operation for a couple weeks and then kind of get some feedback about it. Um, so would would it be agreeable to the board to, in two weeks at our next meeting, uh, get some, get some comments and and see how that is working? And leave the the committee, let us think through some things on our own, do some more research, and um, maybe continue this conversation at our next meeting. I I I I personally would still like to talk to somebody in Grafton, somebody in Westboro and see you know, see how effective these committees are.
I did, I did speak through the chair. I did speak with Westboro with the Assistant Town Administrator, who I happen to know pretty well uh, about this. And what she indicated to me was they were looking to consolidate or dissolve their traffic committee because it was being duped. They had made too many similar committees, and there was too much overlap. Um, and Becca works from Grafton. Becca can tell you right now how Grafton works. Through the chair, if you'd like.
Yeah, through the chair, I mean, um, in Grafton, it's a little bit different. Uh, they don't, uh, you know, they don't have nearly the same level of develop development that Northboro does, so they're not dealing with a lot of the trucking issues. Um, the traffic and safety committee largely dealt with, um, like requests for stop signs, crosswalks. Uh, if, you know, uh, residents had deaf children, they would put in requests for deaf child sign, but nothing, you know, you're not talking about like large state, large-scale town uh, traffic issues. Um, it was mostly enforcement. Um, and then, you know, through uh, the DPW director, the engineer, and the police chief all sat on that committee.
Thank you, Becca.
Thank you, Becca. Any other comments? Any suggestions for how to proceed? Leslie?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say too, and I had already said this previously, which is that I think, you know, with the page, we get this going and we see how it goes. You know, we need to give it a few weeks, though. I think we need to give it more than than a couple weeks. I think we need to, no one, I don't know how long would it take David to put this up?
It's going to take a couple of weeks just to get this thing going, just so everybody's clear. This is not not something we're going to be able to do tomorrow.
Exactly. And see how it how it functions, make sure everybody's aware of it and is knows that it's out there. And we see usage on it, and then we can evaluate it. And see, I think I'm I'm much more prone to make a commitment toward that as opposed to agreeing to a new committee tonight when I'm not convinced that there's any value added to that.
Thank you, Leslie. Any further comments? Julian?
The the concern for me now is that it sounds like master plan implementation committee doesn't have a schedule yet. And I, you know, it might just be me, but I'm sensing a real sense of urgency um, from a lot of people about traffic safety and by the net, by our next meeting, it would be nice to know when master plan implementation is going to reasonably get started. If it's going to be, you know, summer or fall, then I, you know, I think we might have to really consider some kind of ad hoc or advise, you know, short-term advisory committee.
Yeah, through if I may, through the chair, you know, this this sense of urgency, this is really guiding i- is pertaining to uh, Amazon and Bartlett Street. I don't know that there's anything different that we would be doing out there than what we're doing right now. So it's not as though nothing is occurring out there. That situation is is being addressed and um, to the extent that we legally can address it. Um, so that that that's going on. I I don't get that there's a sense of urgency that somebody would like to talk about a crosswalk, or I mean, those are things that we take up on a on a regular basis all year round. The urgency of at least what I'm seeing is coming from the Bartlett Street neighborhood pertaining to Amazon coming in. That's that's the sense of urgency. I don't know that there's anything different that we'd be doing out there than we're doing right now and working through all of the things that we've done.
Yeah, um, the the Amazon is a big, a big question mark. And, um, are we going to hear from Amazon at some point, uh, exactly what that operation is going to look like once it gets going?
Yes, I, as I said, I've I've made that request. I'm waiting to hear back from them. They weren't going to make this meeting, but but they're looking at potentially one of the other meetings uh, next month.
Great. Okay, great.
Uh, Tim, any further comments?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Uh, for purposes of uh, the proposal from town staff, uh, does anyone wish to offer a motion?
Mr. Chairman, just by consensus, if you guys want to move forward with that, we'll just, we'll move forward with it. I don't know that you need a formal motion to do it. Just, again, we're trying to offer up solutions or potential solutions. If that's something the board's interested in, we'll 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 proceed with that. It will take a little bit uh, to get it, you know, up and running. Um, but uh, but we'll we'll move forward with that. I think that's the one thing we agreed on tonight.
Okay. Uh, by consensus, uh, is everyone in agreement with that to proceed with the town website uh, as a as a venue for uh, um, Centralizing the information concerning traffic safety concerns and the responses of town staff to those issues. As proposed by town staff.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Julianne?
Um, I just, I just want to make sure that people know that they can still email us directly and um. A- and yes.
Right, noth- nothing prevents them from contacting us directly. Um, the. The benefit of the town website is just it's gonna be a central place or anybody in town can go to. You don't have to be on a particular email distribution to know about an issue and to understand how it was resolved, so. Um, certainly, anyone can contact us individually or as a board uh if they like about a particular issue, but. Um, for the benefit of the entire town to be aware. Of all of, you know, whatever issues arise and, and how they're resolved or disposed of. Then uh this, this provides that uh. Efficient point of contact for people to, to find what they're looking for. So is that by agreement, Julianne?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. By agreement, moving forward with the proposal of town staff to uh continue to work the issues that are in progress. To uh provide a venue on the town website, which is dedicated to. Uh, receiving uh. Traffic safety concerns uh submitted by citizens. And providing responses in that venue uh so that they're. Broadly available and everyone is aware of them. And at this point uh. Deferring to the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Which is launched, which is in progress and which will require town staffing itself uh. Uh, to proceed with its work. One item of which will be. Some of the planning uh issues that uh concern traffic and safety. Very good. I think we are concluded on this topic. Which only just now brings us to reports. Let's begin with Scott Rogers.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess the main item to bring up is the report back uh Community Affairs Committee. Uh, has continued to plan some uh events this spring uh promoting local businesses, so stay tuned for that information. And then in terms of the organization of that committee, Lisa Hodge is stepping down as chairperson, so if possible, I'd like to see if I, my math is right. She's uh. Provided services to uh, to the community for about fifteen years, so if we could do something to. Recognize uh her, her uh service, that would be great.
Great, thank you, Scott. Yes, um, is that, that conclude your report?
And just one more, yes, yeah, the, the other items we've covered.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Uh. Moving on to Julianne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I. Either watched or attended some meetings that happened simultaneously. Uh, three of the committee. That I am liaison to Earthworks, Northborough Cultural Council and Historic District Commission. Um, the NCC is working very hard on, on. Their grants, evaluating the grant applications. And Historic District Commission is working very hard on signage at the um Brigham Street Burial Ground and Howard Street Cemetery. And one item of interest that the chairperson, Norm Corbin, brought up is that. Um, on the White Cliffs page of our website is now the up, anyone can see the final report from the architect. So if anyone is interested in that, it's on that page. Um. Another thing I wanted to bring up is that on February sixteenth, a representative from CMRPC is coming to talk to Planning Board. And one of the topics they will be hearing ideas about is balancing traffic and economic development. So I'll be listening in on that and report back, but um it sounds like. That, that's something that people might want to uh pay attention to. Um, and then just in terms of future meetings. I'm wondering when we are going to discuss. The Town Hall feasibility study that we agreed on at town meeting. As one question and also my other question is. Will the legislative delegation be coming in March and when will we be discussing our? Uh, questions for them?
So just through the chair, if I may, the uh legislative delegation is scheduled for your second meeting in March, as they are every year. Uh, we have, as you received, uh, the memo that went out with regard to legislative priorities. Um. And uh, we're compiling that information in our office now. Um. And that we typically go, come to the board uh sometime at one of your meetings in February.
And, and the town hall?
Yeah, so we haven't begun that process yet.
So I have a question on that. Our, our, whatever agreement we have right now with Four West Main Street is up in April of twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
Um. Will there, will? Will there be questions that are um? Items that we have to vote on for that at town meeting? To extend that or um, you know, getting direction on how to proceed with that? Because that we will only have one opportunity. At town meeting this April, right?
Uh, yeah, we'll take, um, I'm not sure what it'll require in terms of action at this town meeting, but that. We're working on the warrant or we will be working on the warrant uh. Uh, beginning next month.
Okay.
Look at the town, I mean, uh, uh, there's no mystery here. We're gonna take the property back one way or another because it's a significant asset. The, the feasibility study is designed to determine what are we going to do when we do take it back? So, um, whether or not to take it back, I don't believe is in question.
Oh, okay, good, good, all right.
Why wouldn't you, you can get a, a building for ten thousand dollars, why wouldn't you take it? So, the question, the feasibility study is designed to determine when we take it back, we have the option to flip it, we can just surplus it. And take the money and put it towards a, another project. Uh, or we can use it for municipal use, so those are two separate issues.
Okay, thank you. That's it, Mary.
Thank you, Julianne. Uh, Leslie?
Okay, I'd like to uh first off, thank John and Jason Little and Amy Haley for their work on the Financial Trend Monitoring uh. Meeting uh was held on January fourteenth and uh was attended by the Board of Selectmen, Financial Planning. Appropriations and a Northville School Committee. I want to thank John for that. That was a very good meeting. Uh, it was based on the information we have at this time. That's the best we can do. So I also want to thank the churches in town who rang bells um. As part of the National uh COVID nineteen Day of Remembrance at five thirty on January nineteenth. Um. I, I think that's wonderful as a national endeavor and a national initiative, and I think it was a fantastic idea. I also want to thank the DPW in advance for any kind of plowing and sanding they may be doing this week. So, thank you. And I also just in general want to thank all of our first responders. For all the work that you do all the time, especially during this pandemic. I think that it's. Important to thank people who put their, themselves out there for all of us in. In order to maintain the safety and health and wellbeing of our community. So, thank you very much. That ends my report.
Thank you, Leslie. Tim?
I just wanted to um. Remind people that even though we are a- a- after the, the holiday season, the. The food pantry is still in need of uh donations for, for clothing items. Uh, cash donations and, and food. Um. So just keep that in mind. Um, and the other, the other charities in town also continue to, to need. Um, help with, with the services they, they provide. Um, that's it. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, I just, I'll, I'll follow up on Scott Rogers' mention of Lisa Hodge's service on uh Community Affairs Committee. Lisa's been uh kind of a stalwart, uh, uh, an enthusiastic leader uh in that regard. Certainly appreciate all her efforts over the years and um. Uh, uh, we certainly uh will, yeah, take the, uh, the appropriate uh steps for recognizing that service. Um, so. Thanks for laying us know, Scott. Um, and additionally, yes, I just want to thank uh, uh, John and town staff uh for the Financial Trend Monitoring uh System Presentation, a very different uh. Presentation in some sense compared to past years uh, uh, coming a month later roughly than it typically does and uh. Being uh probably at the height of uncertainty going forward compared to what we understood uh at this time in past years, so. Uh, it takes a lot of work uh to try to. Decode whatever information there might be coming in dribs and drabs from the state uh to understand. Where we're gonna be budget wise, uh what resources will be available. What measures we have to take. In our planning. For this budget cycle, but uh. Uh, certainly uh appreciate uh all the effort, John, uh Finance Director Jason Little. Uh, Greg Martino, uh Superintendent of Schools and, and other staff members who uh. Put in that time and are trying to work with uh. You know, work in difficult circumstances to try to keep us on a, on a decent timeline uh for getting that done. Uh, Becca, thank you very much too. I under, I know you've, you've been involved in that as well, so. Appreciate all the work. Uh. Uh, and I think that concludes my report. Uh, John, anything?
No remark.
Okay. Brings us to public comment. Uh. We still have some attendees uh attached. If anyone would like to do general public comment, this is the time. Uh, if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Connected by phone, please dial star nine. Going once, going twice. And we have. A commenter. Uh, bringing you in. Suzie Sizilka. Hi, Suzie.
Hi again. Um, I had some questions that came up. Um, when we were talking about the page. Is it gonna be something that's gonna be searchable, this traffic safety page? Because I was picturing someone. Had mentioned when describing it a bulletin board and I'm picturing like when you're on like. eBay or, you know, something where people post themselves, recycle or something, you have to like. Scroll and scroll and scroll, so I was wondering if it was gonna be searchable. Like Northgate area, Bartlett, Maple.
Um, at, at this point, we're, you know, conceptually, we're putting this together, so that's something we're taking into consideration.
Yeah, just so you wouldn't have to, because it would be, um, that would be pretty time consuming. Um, and I was sad to hear that no one saw a positive impact that citizens could have on the committee. I was glad that Scott had found some committees that did have um citizens on them. I love Julianne's idea about reaching out and seeing how they work and everything. Um. And I was wondering who's, who's, who would be, who's gonna be managing the page? Like we had been talking about it. So, like. They're gonna go through the page and like if it goes to DPW or if it goes to maybe a Board of Select person. Who knows the answer or fire or police like.
Well, oh, sorry, go ahead, I didn't mean to.
Yeah, um, I just didn't know who is gonna manage that and. I think one of the problems, like, as I've called in these lots of months, um, is I don't know how it's prioritized. I don't know what the decision making is. I don't know how the budgeting works. Um, so that's one comment and I had one more in case my three minutes is um.
Keep going, you're, you're fine, Suzie.
Is uh almost up here about the grants. I've written grants in the past for various things. Um, we write grants for the PTO. We review them. I worked in municipalities before. I worked for law firms. I volunteered my time. Um. I've, I've written grants before. I know that there are checks and balances that you have to go through when you get them. Um, but the payoff is, is enormous and those checks and balances are there to make sure that the money is spent wisely and. That um, you're gonna get a quality product when done and you're not just gonna take like the lowest bidder or whatever. Um, I did look up the one grant that John had uh mentioned that. The um Complete Streets Grant Program. We're one of the only communities in the surrounding area. You can go in there that didn't apply for it. I mean, if we don't have the manpower, I, I mean, obviously staff is gonna have to check all of it. And review it and go through it, but like. You could have help with the research and you could, I mean, that's what volunteers do. Um. That's what, that's what they do. They volunteer to help. So I just wish it wouldn't be um. An advisory board is something that I hope comes out of the Master Plan Implementation Committee whenever that meets, because I don't think it's on the calendar. But it's gonna start taking care of, I don't know, I'm still confused about the traffic, but I'm looking forward to seeing the webpage. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzie. Uh, anyone else? For public comment? And seeing none, thank you, thank you all. Uh, this brings us to new business. Update on Preliminary Free Cash Plan. John, can you take us through that?
Given the R, I won't take up a lot of your time, but um typically, uh, well, let me just back up. Under our uh financial policies, particularly our free cash policy. Uh, I'm required when our free cash is certified at the conclusion of a fiscal year. I'm required to put together at least a, a preliminary plan uh for discussion purposes on how we could potentially spend that money uh in compliance with the policy itself. So, um, if you bear with me one second, um. I'm just gonna share. My screen. And so. All right, so uh what I'm showing you uh right now is a uh two. Two plans. One is the one we just implemented from last year from fiscal twenty twenty-one. The other is the proposed preliminary plan for twenty twenty-two. And so um twenty twenty-one was a very unique year, so if you, if you follow the table, uh, we had about a little over two point eight million dollars in free cash, which is essentially. Budget surplus from the prior fiscal year. Uh, normally, we put money into the Appropriations Committee Reserve Account. That's our emergency fund during the fiscal year. That we use to deal with storms or unforeseen circumstances. Um, uh, but in accordance with our policy, we put. Five hundred thousand or dollars or one percent into the operating budget for the upcoming year. And then uh we oftentimes will put money into our stabilization fund, which is our rainy day fund, usually about two hundred thousand. And then the balance of it is used to do pay as you go capital improvements. So these are uh projects that we then do not need to fund with debt service. So if you look at the plan from twenty-one, not a, not a typical year. We did not put any money into stabilization because again, we had revenue constraints uh with the impacts of COVID coming. Uh, we put another two hundred thousand into the emergency reserve account, so instead of having a hundred and seventy-five thousand, we have three seventy-five. In fiscal twenty-one, and we did that because we didn't know what was going to happen. So literally, we didn't know until December twenty-seventh. That the federal government was going to allow us to continue using. The COVID relief funds because they expired on December thirtieth. So, we didn't know if that was going to be continuing or not, so that was our reserve fund. In the operating budget, instead of five hundred thousand, which is our policy target amount. We used eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, and again, that was to offset the impacts of the reduction in revenues from state and local receipts. And so obviously, uh, we scaled back our capital projects and normally we would leave five hundred thousand dollars just in these free cash account. Um, as a hedge against whatever might happen in the subsequent year. So in twenty twenty-one, we postponed significant capital projects. And we left a little over eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in uh available free cash. So now fast forward to uh the proposed plan for twenty twenty-two. Well. We had significantly less free cash when we closed out the year because. Our revenues were down on account of COVID, so we finished fiscal. The out with one. Nine, eight million dollars in free cash. So based on uh the Financial Trend Monitoring presentation that you had on uh, on the January fourteenth. We, uh, by consensus, uh, we, or at least a model is showing that we're not using. Additional one-time revenues or stabilization funds in the upcoming operating budget. Revenues appear to be stabilizing, not growing, but stabilizing for fiscal twenty-one, uh, twenty-two. To a hundred and seventy-five thousand in our Appropriations Committee's uh Emergency Reserve Fund. That's what we typically budget there. We're back to. Dollars in the operating budget, which is the target in the policy, which is one percent or less of the operating budget being made up of uh one-time revenues. Things aren't so good that we should be contributing to our rainy day fund. I think it is a victory for us to be able to say that we're not drawing from our rainy day fund during this emergency. So to think that we could contribute to it, I think the fact that we're not drawing from it, so that is zero, is a good place for us to be. And then last but not least, we have, under this plan, that would allow us to spend a little about, a little over $800,000 in pay-as-you-go capital. We postponed a lot of smaller capital projects last year. We did that knowing it was a temporary measure just to see what was going to happen with COVID-19 and to let the uncertainty surrounding the budget shake out. Well, that's happened and, and we are in reasonably good shape, as you heard from the presentation on the 14th. And so basically, we're proposing then to spend 805 on capital. So we got to get back to buying cruisers, vehicles, and some of the other projects that we need to move forward with. Right now, this has been the conservative approach that we've used with our past plans, and that is to hold, you know, $500,000 aside. And essentially, the reason for that is if everything went wrong, you're using $500,000 in one-time revenues in the operating budget. We know moving into fiscal 2023, we'd have at least that amount. So again, this is a preliminary plan. The point of this is to show how the money could be spent in accordance with our free cash plan. Now, the balance of this would, and this follows the policy exactly. Now, moving forward, it would be the Financial Planning Committee's job to work with staff in my office to determine what capital projects would move forward to town meeting based on the six-year capital improvement plan. So this is the preliminary free cash plan. The memo that you received has a lot more detail that I'm not getting into in terms of, in terms of the free cash. But it also includes a, I think about a six or seven page of questions and answers about what is free cash? Why do we consider it a one-time revenue? There's a chart in there that you can see that has a 30-year history of free cash. This chart right here, and you can see, one of the things I'll draw your attention to is look at fiscal '20. As, as revenues get tight and budgets get tight, you know, we've seen a pretty consistent downward trend of budget surplus. And in general, when things are improving, you tend to have a little more free cash. When things are contracting, you tend to finish out the year a little bit tighter. And so certainly, fiscal '20 was a very tight year. In fact, basically, everything that was returned, keep in mind, we left $188,000 on the table. We had expenditures that we, we didn't freeze by well, 20, but we, we made a conscious concerted effort not to spend anything that we didn't have to to make sure that we finished out the year in the black. So these numbers are actually somewhat artificially inflated. If we hadn't done those two things, we'd have finished fiscal '20 even tighter than we did. We're hoping 20, when we finish fiscal '21, that, you know, will be in that, you know, in that range of, you know, a couple of million dollars, which, just so everybody understands, it sounds like a lot of money, but it's one to two, you're basically within 2% of your operating budget and within 2% of your revenue estimates. Honestly, you can't, you've heard our auditor come in every year and he'll tell you, you can't get any closer than that. And if you do, it's just dumb luck. Because things are just, that's pretty tight if you're down to within 2% of budget. That's a very good place to be. So that's the plan. Again, in the handout, you have all of the information, and I'm happy to answer any questions. The purpose of this exercise, again, is to put a preliminary budget, a preliminary plan together. I don't see the Appropriation Committee Reserve changing. I don't see the operating budget contribution changing and the balance. The only thing that might kind of tweak around is when you're fitting projects in, if you need a little bit more to fit a project in, you know, do we reduce the $500,000 that we're leaving behind by a small amount, potentially? That would be the only thing in my mind that might, might change. All of this, everything that you see here is, is designed to identify a target number that for pay-as-you-go capital. But everything would require, you know, town meeting approval. It's a separate article for the reserve account. Operating budget is a separate article, and the capital project expenditures are all individualized articles. So everything needs to be approved. It would be approved at town meeting. This is just a set the table for how we could spend the money in compliance with the policy. So I can happy to answer any questions that anybody might have. And by the way, normally, you have this conversation and this plan is, is almost always done at your second meeting in October. But we didn't know at the second meeting in October whether or not we were going to need to dip into reserves to balance the budget because we didn't know what the state was going to do, and we didn't know a lot of things. So as we get a little bit more information, I'm actually pleased to see us going back. When you start drawing from your savings account to balance budgets, the hardest thing to do is to get off of that. And so we did it last year, and we're proposing to get off of it immediately. So that's a very conservative position for us to be in. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody may have regarding the document or the preliminary plan.
Thank you, John. I mean, this, this looks terrific, quite frankly, because as you noted, last year, we had a much larger subsidy to the operating budget, and this year, we're returning back to our $500,000 level. So to accomplish that, just within the one-year turnaround in this cycle is impressive. So just getting back on that track and also the importance, you know, in, in tight budget circumstances or downturns, you can buy yourself a very little bit of time by deferring some of your capital projects, but you can't do that indefinitely. You just build up a great backlog of costly problems. Doing that, we've been there before and now it's important for us to try to get back on track within, you know, constraints of the coming year's budget or whatever and, and get those projects underway and keep that pipeline flowing so that we don't incur this kind of rolling capital debt in a manner of speaking. Any other, any questions or comments from members of the board? Julianne?
I was just wondering, when is Finance Committee and Appropriations going to meet?
They're going to be starting to meet the next month.
Next month? Okay. All right, thanks.
If there's nothing else, we can move on to the next topic. John, update on state aid?
So this past weekend, Thursday, Friday, rather, was the Mass Municipal Association's annual conference. It was virtual this year, obviously, as everything is. And that was the first time that we got a glimmer of what's happening with state aid. Reported back in December, on December 15th, the state has their Revenue Consensus Hearing where they bring in all the economists, Department of Revenue, Administration of Finance, and they try to get some sort of concept of what they think revenues are going to do in the upcoming budget year. And that's the basis upon which the governor begins his budget process and the legislature begins theirs. So that took place on December 15th. Just last week, the legislature, the House and the Senate, they got together and they basically announced that the revenues for the state are forecast to increase by approximately 3.5%. Now, obviously, we talked about a range, and obviously, anybody that came forward, nobody knows exactly how much. They talked about ranges. 3.5% is pretty much the middle of that range, which is normally what they do. So the Lieutenant Governor at the conference basically made the announcement that the town's unrestricted general government aid is going to go up by the same percentage as their forecast. And so this was our first glimmer of what state aid might do. Now, to the untrained eye, this sounds like and looks like really great news. And it is good news, but it's not as good as it sounds. And so when you look at the town's state aid, we have a number of accounts. Unrestricted general government aid is 25% of what we get in, in aid from the state. And for those of you that haven't been around, lottery proceeds, basically. It's like 98% lottery proceeds. The lottery was passed specifically to provide resources to municipalities. Going back several recessions ago, when the, when the state got into trouble financially, they started siphoning off the increases to the lottery proceeds. And they thought, well, rather than call it lottery, where everybody could say, hey, that's our money, they decided to start calling it unrestricted general government aid, just so everybody's clear on that. So it should go up as much as the lottery goes up. That's what we should be getting. So out of our state aid package, 25% is this unrestricted general government aid. So that's what will go up 3.5%. The lion's share, roughly 74, 75% of the town's state aid comes in the form of Chapter 70, which is educational aid, educational grants. And so that's where the money is at, and that's where we don't get much of an increase. And so if you, so when you listen to these press releases, it sounds like we're going to get a 3.5% increase. We're not. Let me just tell you how this all comes together. If you get a 3.5% increase on unrestricted general government aid and you don't get much of anything, if you get nothing on Chapter 70, that's a 1% increase for state aid. Now, if you remember, during this, leading up to the pandemic, we had six years of, of economic growth and we always got a higher percentage of unrestricted general government aid increasing. But our Chapter 70 money only went up a little bit. So we typically get one, one and a half percent of increase in state aid. So sitting here today, right now, on the table here is a 1% increase in state aid, which is about, a 1% increase on that account, which is about $41,000 on a $5.4 million account. $41,000. That's what we're looking at based on these numbers. Now, the issue is, when it comes to Chapter 70, the Student Opportunity Act is still in play, and the legislature and the governor have made very clear indications that any additional aid that they have going into Chapter 70 is going to go to the more needy districts, as you would expect. So the cities are going to see that money. We're not going to see much. We'll probably see a little tweak. So at the end of the day, you know, we might be back to seeing, you know, one, one and a half percent increase in state aid. Our current budget model assumes level funding, which was a pretty good place to start. But if this pans out, you know, we might see another $40,000 or $50,000. Again, on a $70 million budget, it's not going to make or break us. The good news is, the state sees their revenues, their revenue outlook improving, and they're going to share some amount of that with us. So we were all preparing, leading up to the Financial Trend Monitoring, we were all preparing to potentially see a reduction in state aid in fiscal 2022. It doesn't look like we're going to see that. So at the Financial Trend Monitoring, we indicated based on the Revenue Consensus Hearing, but we're not going to see much more than about 1%. So again, just updating you, that is the latest. The governor is set to release his budget next Wednesday on January 27th. We'll see then the balance of what he's including for Chapter 70. And then the big caveat, as I tell you all, all the time, our state aid comes in with two hands, one giveth and one taketh away. So we get state aid, and then we also get assessments for things like the, the MBTA, mosquito control, and all these other categories. So it's really the net impact of how much our state aid goes up and how much our assessments go up. So sometimes your state aid can go up 2%, but if your assessments go up by a comparable amount, you get nothing. You're a zero or could be a negative. Generally, you're, that's why we will typically be hovering in around the 1% line, which is again, $40,000 or $50,000 increase in state aid on, you know, the town's budget, which is, again, not going to make or break us. The good news and the takeaway for you tonight is that state aid isn't going to get, at least right now, isn't going to be cut, which means our budget model that we've showed is viable and we're proceeding with it. Can you answer any questions anybody might have on that?
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Any questions, members of the board?
It's late. Everybody just wants to go home.
Hearing none. Any other business to come before the board? I see nothing. In that case, do I have a motion to adjourn? Julianne?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn the January 25th, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Julianne Hirsch, seconded by Tim Kalin. This is a roll call vote. Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch?
Aye.
Leslie Rutan?
Aye.
Tim Kalin?
Aye.
And I will also vote aye. The meeting's adjourned. I want to thank board members and town staff here for what has become a very late meeting. Appreciate all your help and your responsiveness. So have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.